It is Monday, October 13th, and it is just after 6:30 PM. And we will begin, if you'll join me, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anne, we'll do roll call attendance.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Lyle.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Walters.
President.
Friend.
Here.
Let us note that Ms. Cortez is absent.
Okay, thank you. With the agenda, we have an agenda in front of us. Let's see. We don't have any extra items under the consent agenda. Under Business Before the Township Board, we will hear a presentation from Goodwill Northern Michigan on homelessness. The Sheriff's Office will give us a Flock security update. We have some other county agencies on here. Then we swing down to Assessing Department, Parks Commission, and Planning and Zoning. And with that, we have a Corridor Improvement Authority, Safe Routes to Schools, some zoning amendments, and the Crimson Development. So with that, does anyone have a conflict with any item on this agenda?
I do.
Okay, what's that?
For the wetland survey.
Okay, and that's under Safe Routes to School? Okay. So Walters has declared a conflict. Is there a motion to accept that conflict?
I'll make a motion to accept the conflict.
Support.
Okay, a motion made by Bartlett and supported by Cook. All those in favor, or further discussion? All those in favor of accepting that conflict indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, show that the motion passes unanimously. And then, Mindy, when that comes up, we'll just have you leave the room. Thank you. With that, we have come to approval of the agenda that was previously mentioned. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Full move.
Support.
There's a motion by Lyle and support by Cook to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, show that the motion passes unanimously, and we do have an agenda. With that, we will move to public comment. Anne, will you go over the guidelines for the public comment, please?
I don't have any further comments.
Oh, you can, you kind of get the gist. You remember from...
Any person shall be permitted to address the township board, which is required to be open to the public under the Open Meetings Act. You have to come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you may not speak more than once on the same matter. And you have three minutes notated by this. Let's see, whenever individuals want to trade their minutes for a group, a group wishes to address the board, the chairperson may require that the group designate a spokesperson. And in order to avoid unscheduled debates, the board generally will not comment or respond to presenters, just so you know. Is that good?
That works, that works. So as long as everybody's clear, if there is public comment, please make your way to the podium and introduce yourself. Okay, don't be shy, come on up. And if there's anybody after this lady, please feel free to stand behind her so you're ready to come up to the podium. Hi, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you. My name is Michelle Whitcup. I live at 823 Indian Trail in the Pine Grove neighborhood. I just discovered that the residential areas are being excluded from the CIA district, which is concerning. It seems residents must shoulder the burden of improvements in the Beach District but are not being given the opportunity to benefit from any potential TIF funding to improve safety in their areas. This brings to mind Little Fleet and its impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, specifically foot traffic, parking, noise, and increased car traffic. Similar issues could occur in Pine Grove with the proposed development of Mitchell Creek and in the Four Mile area with a proposed development of the public pier. While the Beach District is important and impactful to businesses, we live here 24/7/365. Whatever is done will have an impact on our quality of life, environment, and lives. Local businesses and their customers access their establishments using our roads. People from these businesses, identifiable by their name tags and uniforms, use our roads for walking, biking, and often cut through to avoid traffic. This breaks down our roads, creates traffic and noise, and takes a toll on the peaceful nature of our neighborhoods. Residents should have the opportunity to have a seat at the table and also should be included in the CIA district to access distribution of any available TIF funds. A suggestion would be to include a portion of each neighborhood in the CIA district, such as the Indian Trail and Pine Grove Act part of it, excluding the upper streets that go from Parsons to Indian Trail and at Four Mile include Oak Streak but not Pine. Then not only would the tax base increase, but the total residential area would benefit while only parts of each residential area are being included. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any further public comment? Go ahead, and if you would, Judy, just stand up behind here so you're ready to go. Hi, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Gail Mason, Willsey Road. My husband and I have been to many of the Planning and Zoning Board meetings where the temporary dwelling ordinance was being discussed. There was a lot of talk about, from suggestions from the community, as to how it should be worded, if there even should be, an ordinance. And looking at the proposed ordinance that I assume you guys are going to vote on today, I don't see any of the public input being added to that ordinance. It's all exactly as it was outlined at almost the first meeting we attended. This all started because there was a handful of people doing disruptive things that were bothering another handful of people. A group of those got together, got signatures, I don't know the number, I seem to remember in the area of several hundred. East Bay Township has about 12,000 residents, so now those 12,000 residents are being told we have to do this because a handful of people did something a couple hundred people didn't like. That is not fair. It's also not fair to treat someone who lives on Indian Trail Boulevard the same way as someone who lives on acreage out in the rural area. We have postage stamp properties, and we have huge parcels, and we're all being told that we're allowed the exact same thing. That is not fair. This proposal is ambiguous, full of disparity and lack of clarity, and I think it's opening a can of worms. I think every complaint should be treated individually. The Planning and Zoning Commission has said from the start that they are complaint-based, that they don't address anything, they don't go looking for trouble. If someone complains, then they address it. And that's the way it should be. Blanketing this, the whole township with this ordinance is going to cause you guys more trouble than you've ever had in the past. And I ask you to vote no on that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Hi, Judy, how are you?
Good, and you?
Good.
Judy Pelto, Abbey Lane. I noticed in the packet that there's a list of recommended liaisons for the East Bay Beach District Corridor Improvement Authority. And the state of Michigan requires at least one member of the board should reside in the development area or within a half mile of the CIA. I attended the Beach District visioning process, and it was very clear that the residents who attended were concerned with items such as walkability, safety, the development of open spaces such as pocket parks, the impact on the neighborhood quality of life. It was also clear they would like to see less multi-story structures. Two of the proposed appointees, Ellie Diola and Chris Cargill, live in the corridor. But Diola also owns the Alexandria Inn, and Cargill owns a Stonehouse Brewery, Stonehound Brewery, which just borders the Beach District. Although they both meet the state of Michigan requirements, there is the appearance of a conflict of interest when it comes to ensuring residents' interests are served. I strongly recommend that the board consider adding at least one, if not two, board members to the CIA who are residents of the corridor and do not have any business or financial interest in the corridor. This would result in a more balanced board and more accurately represent residents of the corridor. I also urge the board to place, to put in place restrictions that any person appointed as a representative of the residents to the Corridor Improvement Board may not have any commercial or financial interest in the corridor. It certainly appears as a conflict of interest. You can't represent both in the same way that you would represent one. So I also would suggest, I didn't know about this until I got the packet and found it on page 75, and I think that it would be fair for the community and for the board if you posted this on your, these openings on your website, possibly in the newspaper, and give people the opportunity who live and work in the districts to apply for that position. Because they can, and also, I did say, I hope, that the restrictions, that if you're going to have people representing residents, that's what they should represent, and there should be no conflict of interest. So that should be in a statute, that you have no financial interest in a business in the district. So that's my story.
Thank you. Hello, Caitlin, how are you?
Good. Good evening. Caitlin Filinski, East Bay Township resident. I'm speaking tonight regarding two of the proposed zoning amendments, temporary dwelling units and accessory dwelling units. Per the zoning ordinance, the Lakes area is zoned low-intensity residential. Per the master plan, the future land use map labels the Lakes area as very-low-density residential. Therefore, if anything, density should be reduced or lessened in the Lakes area with any future zoning amendments. However, with temporary dwelling units and accessory dwelling units, you are potentially tripling density in our area. This goes completely against the master plan. I do appreciate that you're only allowing accessory dwelling units on conforming lots. If you approve the temporary dwelling unit amendment in the future, please only allow them on conforming lots. You cannot expand a nonconformity, yet with this amendment, you are increasing density on already too-small, nonconforming lots. Individuals that spoke out in favor of the temporary dwelling unit amendment admitted to the Planning Commission that they were regularly using TDUs this entire time. Yet, as your memo states, they are currently not allowed. Perhaps that means there is a desire to have them in the township. However, it is concerning to me that this was occurring and it was not being enforced. Because it has already been proven that this rule has been violated and were not easily enforced, please require a web-based permit system. One of your PC members that approved this amendment said something along the lines of, "Well, this rule's not enforceable, but what can you do?" Please do not create a rule that has been regularly violated by some already that does not have a means to track and enforce it. There needs to be transparency, accountability, and proper compliance. So to summarize, my ask is please do not allow temporary dwelling units in the Lakes area, or if you choose to move forward with them in all districts, only allow them on conforming lots. Do not make a nonconforming lot more nonconforming. And require a web-based permit system to create transparency, accountability, and a paper trail for enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
I'm doing all right. I'm David Endicott, a resident of East Bay Township on Arbutus Lake Five. I'm also a VP of the Protect Forest Lakes Organization, and would like to remind everyone that 179 people signed a petition last year opposing ADUs and TDUs in the Lakes area. So with that, I've read the most recent draft of the proposed language governing TDUs, and I'm concerned about enforcement. Without a way to audit when a residence' 10 days begins, it will be impossible to enforce. And at worst, it pits neighbor versus neighbor based on anecdotal, verseless factual evidence. And I think that's something that, especially with this being complaint-driven, you really want to make it fact-based as opposed to he or she said versus whatever. So as a former CTO and CIO of major national companies, I know from experience that the following is a possible solution that is easy, low-tech, and relatively cheap to implement. People who want to set up a TDU on their property simply inform East Bay Township via a page on the East Bay Township website that directs them to a dedicated email box. They type in their name, when they're setting up the TDU, and where the TDU is going to be placed. These emails create a searchable audit trail that can be used by the township to validate whether or not an incoming complaint has merit. It doesn't have to be monitored unless a complaint is filed. The incentive for someone who wants to set up a TDU to utilize such a system is that without a formal email slash notification request to the township, the burden of proof will be on them to disprove a complaint. There are other options that are, that I can think of that would be easy to install and operate as well, but this example is one, like I said, that is easy, painless, doesn't require any time from either the person doing the notification to someone doing the actual management. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hello, Carol, how are you?
Good evening. Carol Kussel from East Bay Township resident. I applaud much of the work the township has done on the Beach District. I urge you to make the CIA board be equal parts business owners and residents, and that those residents include folks not only from those who reside in the Beach District but also residents of our township that reside in the greater, in the greater township. It feels to me that the Beach District has become more of an incentive for the businesses of the motel highway corridor that we have at this point, and not what I had urged months, maybe even years ago, and that was to develop something in our community that serves our citizens and encourages our citizens to use facilities, businesses within our community. And I think that by the township choosing to put more citizens on that board, that could make a big difference. A second point that I want to speak about is the temporary dwellings. Two points. I strongly encourage you to decrease the 45 days to 30 days. Forty-five days covers basically the good parts of our summer, which is all of July and part of August. And if I, or any of you, or anyone had campers next to you during that part of the year that most of us enjoy, primarily enjoy, it would be a real deficit to our lifestyle, our comfort, our owning of the property and being able to recreate in the ways that we want to. So decrease the days from 45 to possibly 30. And also, as several other people have said, establish an online registration for the TDUs to help enforcement, have that paper trail, take the responsibility for the enforcement as our township, as our elected township representatives, instead of pushing that responsibility onto each citizen to contact the township and say, "This is happening," and then have the back and forth of he said, she said kind of thing. There's been difficult situations in the community already with that kind of situation. This could only get worse. Please consider those things, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you, Ben?
Good.
Jill Bernardi. I live on Renneview Road in East Bay Township. Couple things, the ADUs, the temporary dwelling units, and the Pine Grove neighborhood all affect me directly. I might not be super popular, but I am in favor of ADUs and temporary dwellings, even in nonconforming areas. But it needs to be tightened up. Whether or not you open it up to nonconforming or not, I do believe Mr. Endicott was right that there has to be some kind of a system to keep us honest people honest. So I would love to see you guys put that extra work in and figure out a way so that they can be monitored, so the people doing it right can remain doing it right. As far as the Beach District, I really promote it. I do own property in that neighborhood, and I think it's going to be great for the overall township. I think it's going to be great for the residents as well. I did, I was pleased to see the ticker article today that you are looking for residents that aren't business owners, and I did see that you were looking out to reach them. I know of many people in the neighborhood that would jump on the chance to be on that. So reach a little further, I guess, before you go ahead and only allow business owners slash residents to represent us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, how are you?
Hi, I'm Teresa Giorgiani, 820 Indian Trail Boulevard. Been a resident of the neighborhood for quite some time now and have gone through where there's been construction, people driving through our neighborhood, the Airbnb process, and none of it has been beneficial to the residents that actually live there. With the new development in the corridor, I hope that you more than consider highly that at least two local residents of the two major Beach Districts, Pine Grove and the Four Mile area, be part of those boards. It's our tax dollars that are going to develop this, and it seems like it has, in the past and currently, going more to what's going to benefit the visitors, what's going to benefit the businesses along that corridor, and there's nothing being done to improve our neighborhood. We have people going through there already. I hope that the Pine Grove neighborhood, the Lakes, the Four Mile area are not included in the allotment that would consider TDUs, which would just exacerbate a problem that is already out of control. So I hope that you take more care in making these decisions than what happened with the Airbnb. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brandon, please come up and stand behind him so you're ready to go, if you would.
Sorry about that. Jeff Geiger, East Bay Township. And regarding both the accessory dwelling units as well as the temporary dwelling units, we are in favor of that. I spoke to hundreds of people, representing hundreds of people, they put their signature on, wanting as much as 365, saying not many people would really need to stay that much, but at least 180 during the summer months. I know you are addressing that for construction, which is good. Bill Vanderkook himself said there's not many issues. I know that a lot of work and time has been put into this, Claire and other people. East Bay Townships really want to have camping. They want more than what you're allowing with that 10-day 45. I think they'll accept that, gives you a little trial period, it's easier to go forward, add days if you believe, that's what you said in the past. We had actual signatures, I did see that one document with 170 names printed, maybe from members. I did talk to some of those people personally that did want ADUs, they did want some camping. That was more of a blanket thing when they were talking about Marina is another thing, I believe. I could be mistaken on that. The Lakes areas, most of those places really can't fit an RV. A lot of those lots are very small. I think if they can fit it, everybody needs to be included. I hate to see anybody excluded. We in the Lakes area have 11 acres, so, you know, we think just because we're in the Lakes areas, we shouldn't be excluded from being able to camp there, definitely. I do like that you put in the tents, that covered a lot of people's concerns with children. That was good. The tree houses and everything, I'm kind of, you know, not sure about that. Most, everybody I talked to, I had a couple who are not pro-camping. Like to see those both extended, like I say. The accessory dwelling units will help much-needed ability to have housing for like our family members, if they want to live in there, if somebody needs a resident or a member to stay in the residence. It's a lot easier having them in a separate part of the house. It's good to family. I appreciate everybody's putting the work towards this. I urge you to pass both of those, both of those, the accessory dwelling units as well as the temporary dwelling units. We've worked hard. I think China just built the longest bridge and the highest bridge in like two years, and we're still on the same subject here. We really do want to have some camping. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? If there is anyone else, if they'll take a stance behind Brandon, that would be helpful timewise.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Brandon Filinski, East Bay Township president. My comment this evening is regarding the zoning amendment 5-25, impervious area definition. I have several thoughts and questions regarding how the topic of modifying the impervious area definition to allow permeable surfaces, in hopes that they'll add some meaningful dialogue to your discussion tonight. As the existing ordinance is written, it presents a constraint when developing a parcel. It often limits the amount and size of structures that can be constructed. By limiting the impervious area of a site, East Bay has historically drawn a hard line that properties in this township should include natural greens, blues, reds, oranges, and all the other colors that make Northern Michigan such a desirable place to live and work, instead of a drab mix of asphalt black and concrete gray. The proposed amendment before you this evening does not suggest any maximum amount of permeable surfaces that could and would be installed on a site. Is it the intent of this board to allow citizens to install permeable pavers throughout their entire parcel, or would a maximum cap be more desirable? Next, how would this be administered? Will the systems be inspected, and by whom, and on what frequency? The draft language suggests our ZA would be responsible for approval based on a plan, but that is not a skill set explicitly noted in Section 7.4b1 eligibility of the zoning administrator's position. I believe it would be prudent to have the work inspected prior to backfill, similar to a footing inspection when erecting a building. This would require significant coordination between the township and contractors. The draft language before you tonight suggests the system shall be maintained and cleaned yearly, and that failure to comply shall be considered a violation of the approved land use permit. How will this be tracked? Will the applicant be required to report annually to the township? Lastly, I'd like to play a short excerpt from the Parks Commission meeting of November 20th, 2023. At this meeting, a representative from the township engineering firm stated and shared his insight on the topic of permeable pavers when they were proposed to be used at Arbutus Park Number Five.
You know what, Brandon? If you want to recap it, we're not listening to presentations, public comment.
Thank you.
And then you're going to go over your time, and we can't hear it. Would you like to tell us, recap it for us? That would be great.
So do you need us...
I would like to be able to make my public comment, as I intended to make it this evening, and not be restricted in any way.
I have latitude to comment on the delivery, and your time is getting short. We want the information, we just want it in an easy way, just like everybody else.
Understood. Please review that meeting from November 20th. Cliff Notes are that the township engineer said that that would not be a product that's good to use at the park because they all require maintenance. Maintenance, 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 was his direct quote, and he said that they all fail. Those systems all fail. From the mouth of our engineers, these all fail. The draft before you does not suggest what happened when these systems fail. So I would ask that you please consider that as you're discussing this as well. I hope you use this opportunity for due diligence before Pandora's Box is open. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Hello, Garrison, how are you?
Good. I'll be very quick, I didn't plan on coming up during this section.
Sure.
I just wanted to offer some clarity on the resident CIA board members. Sorry, Garrison Reardon, Four Mile. Sorry about that. I originally showed interest into that board as well. I do live just within the district, so I would be a resident within the district. I'm also on the Parks Commission here, though, so that was deemed to be a conflict of position, so I wasn't allowed to do it. No hard feelings there. I did ask my neighbor, Chris Cargill, to put his hat in the ring. I just wanted to clarify, he is the brewer at Stonehound, he's not the business owner. So he works in Acme Township, but he is a Four Mile resident, very good community member, and I just felt like he was being painted in a bad light. I just wanted to get up on his behalf and say, he's a great guy, great community member, and more so a resident than a business owner.
Thank you, Garrison.
Thank you.
Any further... Any further public comment? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we will move forward. We have correspondence and reports. We have quite a bit in your packet. You've seen that. If there are any questions, let us know. You do have quarterly reports. I'll just note from the Parks Commission, the Assessing Department, Planning and Zoning Department, East Bay Ambulance Report, and the Bank Reconciliations. Those are all provided on a quarterly basis and staff may be touching upon those when they are before us as part of the agenda as well. Okay, with that, we have the consent agenda. Ann, would you go over the consent agenda, please?
The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping noncontroversial items together to be dealt with by one board, motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have board minutes, September 8th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. September 25th, 2025, special meeting minutes, recommend approval. The general fund check numbers, 19802 through 19900, were paid in the amount of $162,955.23, and check numbers 19841, 19844, and 19891 were voided. The emergency fund, check number 6030 through 6058, in the amount of $69,718.17. The receiving fund, check numbers 2993 through 2999, in the amount of $266,628.45. The escrow fund, check numbers 2105 through 2114, paid in the amount of $113,209.26. There was nothing paid out, the roads SAD fund. And there were three payrolls. The first one, August 24th through September 6th, check number 7963 through 7965, totaled The payroll dated September 7th through September 20th, check number 7966 through 7968, totaled And the payroll dated September 21st through October 4th, check numbers 7969 through 7970, totaled $75,688.31. Total payroll, $229,390.21, and total amount paid, $841,901.32. We have quarter three budget amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I will bring that to the board to see if there's anything they would like removed from the consent agenda. I would like to remove the budget amendments. I mean, you guys just got them late this afternoon. I'm happy to walk through them. So if we could put those after the Crimson Development, we'll put them last on the list as item C. We can do that and we'll leave the, I would recommend leaving the rest of the consent agenda as is. Is there a motion for that or some other version of the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the budget adjustments.
Support.
All right, there is a motion by Bartlett and support by Cook. Any further discussion? Oh, let me for a second ask the public if they would like anything removed from the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, there is a motion and support. Ann will do a roll call vote.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Lyle?
No.
M. Cortez?
Yes.
Yes. All right, very good, thank you. We will move on. We have, Dan Buran is here tonight. Dan, let me, do you have...
I have that as well. I have Tucker. Would you like to plug yours in either way?
I'll do it just easier for you. I'll do Peter just for our helpers.
I had it on earlier, it must have timed out. Board members, this is Pat Buran. He is the director of Goodwill Northern Michigan. And he is with us tonight to share a presentation on homelessness. And I'm going to come back to my original. There we go. Where am I looking for animation slideshow? And there you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I'm Dan Buran. As Beth mentioned, I'm the executive director for Goodwill Northern Michigan. And we're just going to talk a little bit, kind of level set a little bit about who Goodwill is and then talk a little bit about the homelessness in our region, kind of why do we have homeless people in our community and what we're doing about it and what potential options we have going for it. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I know you guys have a busy, busy agenda. So just to get some context, Goodwill has been around since 1972. We actually started off as part of Asgard Industries. We, from 1986, we actually became a Goodwill Northern Michigan. At the same time, we took over a motel, the Land O' Lakes Motel. I'm not sure if anyone was familiar with that. That was a little bit before my time. I've been here for 10 years. And that's when we actually started getting involved, more involved in issues of homelessness. It was a collection of churches that were needing some additional help and they asked for us to get involved. And since that time, we have continuously operated a shelter every day, since 365 since 1986. So even more than a Walmart, we've never closed. So just to get a sense of Goodwill, we've been here for 53 years. Our 10 Goodwills throughout Michigan, there's about 153 Goodwells throughout the country. All of our Goodwells are independent. We have what they call a federated model, which is kind of similar to like the YMCA. We actually started off as a ministry of a church back in 1902 in Boston. Edgar Helms was part of, was a Methodist minister. And he started Goodwill as part of the church and it kind of spread from church to church to church throughout the country. And then retroactively, they made it a nonprofit organization. That was, that's been a long time, but it's interesting origin. So just to give you some idea, here are the board members that we have for Goodwill Northern Michigan. You might recognize some of those folks, but those are the folks that make sure that the organization are doing things on behalf of the community. I always like to describe that board members are basically like stakeholders or that they are the ones who represent the community's interest, ensuring that the resources of the organization are used in the best interest. And that'd be true for all nonprofits, not just Goodwill, but just to kind of give a little context of what their role is. And they really made, and they made a decision that this Goodwill, if you're familiar with other Goodwells, they do different things, but our Goodwill really focuses on two things. And that's homelessness and food insecurity. We're just going to touch on the food and security part, but really the focus of today's conversation is going to be about homelessness and the homeless response system. Just to give you some idea, I'm sure, I hope that some of you have been to our store, at least drive by it and hopefully you have donated or have gone shopping there, but to give you some idea, that is a funding model for us, it's a social enterprise. That allows us to do the programming, like the Goodwill Inn, street outreach. We have a Patriot Place in Gaylord, which is for homeless veterans. It also allows us to do food rescue. In addition to that, we leverage dollars from the public. We do get a little bit of government funding and also we do fundraising and things like that. All those things together is what allows us to be able to operate the programs that we have. The stores and the social enterprise covers all administrative expenses for Goodwill. So any dollar that people donate or any federal or state or local government money, again, we're able to put directly into the program because our administrative expenses are covered by the revenue from the store. So, so just to get some sense, food rescue is we pick up food from grocery stores, farms, bakeries. You might have seen our trucks driving around in the area. We cover a lot of territory. We cover five counties. And then we redistribute the food that we pick up the same day. So we pick up the food and we really focus on healthy food. So it's like fresh vegetables and fruits and cheeses and other types of proteins because those are the things, our hardest thing for pantries to get. They get a lot of shelf-stable food, but don't get a lot of fresh foods and vegetables. So we really have been, just when we started back in 19, or 2008, our focus is trying to get as much healthy food as we could into the pantry system. We don't directly give to individuals, but we get out to the pantries who then give out to the individuals. So we distribute over a million pounds of food every year. And right now, one of the main goals we have is trying to get every day that a pantry is open, that they have fresh food and vegetables. And we first started tracking this about 12 years ago, it was about 15%. We're at 85% now and our goal is within the next year, probably in a year and a half, that every time a pantry opens up, that they will have fresh foods and vegetables available for the public to have. So what the main focus of my presentation today is about homelessness. And one of the things I wanted to talk about is why is there homelessness in this community? Why is there homelessness in any community throughout the country? I think you guys actually have a copy of the presentation. Many of you aren't going to be surprised, you guys are obviously having a lot of conversations around housing and this is a really big topic for our region and we know we have a very low vacancy rate. And so one of the examples I like to give is talk about, I mean, people, everyone here has probably seen or at least played musical chairs once in their life. So in musical chairs, there's always less chairs than people playing. That's just the nature of the game. That's what makes it kind of interesting, right? You can keep music playing and then the music stops and you find a chair. And object of the game is someone doesn't get a chair. That's always going to be the game. There's a matter of how you arrange the chairs, no matter what kind of music you play, there's always going to be someone who doesn't have a chair. So you look at the issue of homelessness, if you don't have enough housing stock, there are going to be someone who doesn't have a chair. And the question is, who isn't going to have that chair? Well, it's kind of similar to when you play musical chairs, who doesn't get it? The person may be not as fast or maybe a person is not as strong, that person may not get a chair. Same thing happens in the housing market. People with the least amount of financial and social resources are the ones who are not going to get the housing. Whenever there's a scarcity, there's going, someone is not going to get something. It's people with the least amount of financial and social resources are the ones who don't end up with housing. That's the same across the country. I've been researching on it. Housing is a homeless problem, or homelessness is a housing problem, is a book that kind goes into a little more detail. So you might have a high poverty rate, but it doesn't mean you're going to have homelessness. You may have really generous programs, doesn't mean you're going to have a high rate of homelessness. The best predictor of homelessness is scarcity of housing. But good news is we have a robust homeless response system in place right now. Goodwill is a part of that homeless response system. We're not the entire part of the homeless response system. Northern Michigan Support of Housing is a part of that. NMCAA, which is a community action agency, is a part of that. And the system really is designed to ensure that only the people who truly need deep-level services get it. It's really, we kind of operate kind of like an emergency room. We do a lot of triage to ensure that people enter to the system are people who truly need to go into shelter or need housing. The best solution we can find for people is for them to find their own solution for homelessness. That is our goal. We don't want to bring more people into the shelter system. We want people to find their own solution. It's a much better option for them. So we actually have, we have diversion programs all the way through the system. And so if someone comes to us and they're from a different community, for some reason they ended up here, maybe they had a girlfriend or a boyfriend, thought they were going to have a job or they thought they were going to have a place to stay, and for some reason they're kind of stuck up here, we will help them get back home. If they're for some reason, they might be, they might have a small bill or something that's arrears and might be keeping them pretty well to rent a place, we'll help them close that gap. We know it's better to make those small investments, be able to reduce the amount of people who come into our shelter system. We really want to divert as many people as possible. And overall, the system is working really well. For 80% of people who come to the system have a short stay, they're in and out within a year, and there's a small group of people who have more significant challenges, they may do, they do have to do a bit more intensive work. But the system is working. If you look at national numbers, we're in that range of being an effective response system, ensuring only the people who really need our system are in it and the people are in it as short as possible. There's no advantage for us to have people here. We want to get people out as fast as we can. It's the most dignified way that we can treat people so they can stay in homelessness as short as possible. As you can see, in Traverse County, we have about, we have served about 1,300 people in the homeless response system and those are heads of households. If you include the families in there, you probably can add another about 150 to 200 to that number. And I might also mention, and this might be something if you guys are part of a nonprofit organization or even that, or any other organization might benefit from this. So we give out vouchers to organizations where they can give it out to their clients. We don't regulate how they use them, who they give them out to, and they can shop at our stores and they can buy anything that they want there. We don't have any restrictions on how they use a voucher. So if there's a need for that in an organization that you're a part of, we'd be happy to connect you with that opportunity. So in the Grand Traverse region, it's about, we give out about $151,000 worth of vouchers in the Grand Traverse region. In our total of 19 counties, we give out a half a million dollars of vouchers and people can use any one of our stores in Northern Michigan. And we have nine stores in Northern Michigan, if I should mention that. So we mentioned that most people are able to get out of housing. It works really well. You come into, you can have a crisis for some reason, you're not able to resolve it, but maybe a couple of months later, your situation changes and you get out of homelessness. About 80% of people are in and out. There are about 20% of people have more significant issues that are, that stay in the system a year or more and have a disability. And these are the folks that we want to talk about today because those are the ones that we think about when we think about people who are experiencing homelessness and it's a more complicated response for this, for this group of individuals. These are folks that have had trauma in their lives, had traumatic brain injury typically, might have a disability, might have some other factors that are making it difficult for them to resolve their homelessness, which means they have, don't have the resources, financial resources, or the social resources. That means no one is willing to take them in. At this point, they have no relatives, no friends, no neighbors, anyone in their lives are willing to be able to take them in anymore. It can keep in mind, 80% of people coming in and out. There's a small group that are not able to resolve their homelessness on their own and they do need additional support. If you look at just that population, well, actually, we're going to bring it up. So any one time, we talked about how many people we serve over the course of a year, but if you just take a slice in a day, there's about 250 people experiencing homelessness any one time. And again, you add about 30 more if you want to talk about children's in the household because this only talks about heads of households. How many heads of households are there? And there's 70 people, 70 individuals who are experiencing homelessness at any one time. And that's been consistent for a couple of years. Beth, I think I answered the question.
So that chronic homelessness, those are the 20% that you're talking about?
Those are the 20%. Those are the ones that have been homeless a year or more and have a disability. And that's really, when we talk about the, we were talking about the homeless response system and does what it needs to do, this gets a little bit more complicated because one of the things that we have, we know is that when people are in homelessness, and this is probably not rocket science, but you have really poor social outcomes. You tend to get sicker because you don't have really good access to primary care. Actually, you won't get some surgeries you're not even, you're not even allowed to get because you're, you could be exited back into homelessness and they won't even do them. And you're in constant fight or flight. You're in constant, you're in constant stress mode. You're thinking about what you're going to sleep the next day, about safety. You can't close a door, can't close a window. You don't have that sense of safety. You're in this kind of high-stress alert all the time and that's a terrible on your system. And it's very difficult to maintain a job. It's very difficult to be, to get sober. It's very difficult, very difficult to keep, be, to stay in school. So we know the kids who are homeless are less likely to graduate because they're less likely to go to school. Absenteeism, more absenteeism, less likely to graduate and kids are less likely to go to school when they're homeless. I do want to mention at the Goodwill Inn, we do have micro apartments so families can stay together as a unit and TCAP does a great job. They come, pick up the kids and take them, take them to school. And so we try as much as we can to keep people, family as a unit and as much as normal as possible. They have a kitchen and a living room and they do all their meals together. It's a semi-normal, it's not perfect, but it's, it's better than being homeless. We know the life expectancy is lower and not a big shock. And we've seen, and this has been interesting, it's probably because it's a reflection of the fact that this community as a whole is aging, but we are seeing more seniors in a homeless response system. And the wild thing, and this is a part that, oh, it actually, it's really surprised me when we found this out and I did actually question the data and I did have them look at it again, so I was really surprised by it. So we took the national numbers. Those national numbers are how much it costs for a homeless person to be chronically homeless and what cost, the social cost to the community, you know, police, Muncin, paying for shelter, street outreach, all the things that come with what you do, what you need to do to support someone who is homeless. We took that national number and it came out to about, for the 70 people, so just the 70, it's about $2.5 million a year to keep people, to support people who are homeless and have costs that surrounds them. So that's, you know, that's a national number. Who knows if that number really makes sense locally? So we tried to figure it out and, you know, we're not economists, but we did the best we could to estimate the number. we could to estimate the number. So we asked Muncin, and I said, we're going to take those 70 social security numbers, for those 70 people who are chronically homeless, and could you tell us how much it costs for Muncin to pay for those individuals' medical costs over two years? We wanted to get a two-year number, and then we averaged it. And that average number is $1.26 million. And then we asked the police in Traverse City, just Traverse City, we didn't get into the county, with the sheriff's office, how many incidents do you have with individuals who experience homelessness? How many times do you have contact with them? That's 407 times in a year, in the ambulance, when you put that together. So now it doesn't seem so unreasonable that that number is $2.5 million. And it seems that's likely to be something that's probably true for our community as well. That's a lot of money to spend not really solving a problem. Keeping people alive, or helping people keep safe, it's not, it's important to do some of that, but it's not an effective way to really solve a problem. So I'm here to kind of talk about, like, we can do something better. We get people into housing, we know that their social outcomes are better, they get stabilized, and we also know that it is effective. We know when we get people into housing, that they're more like, and also providing housing-based case management. So Goodwill provides support to make sure that individual is going to be successful. We meet them on a regular basis. We do room. We also check out their rooms, we go into their rooms. So it's like an apartment like anyone else, but they have a little bit less, a little bit less, more, a little more restrictions, but we want to support them in being successful. And we know when we get people in housing, the chronic people we're talking about, these really difficult clients that we said, that we're spending a lot of money on, and 92% of the time, they're actually still there a year later. So it's possible for us to be successful with this, if we can get a rental, we need a units, which are hard to get. Housing-based case management is what Goodwill provides, and then a rental subsidy. And it's, I think I actually missed it, but it's actually a lot cheaper to house someone than it is the $2.5 million. It costs about $1 million for those 70 people versus $2.5 million. So it's cheaper, and it's a better, better outcomes for the individual, and it's better outcomes for our community. So one of the things that Goodwill is doing is trying to work on getting more units of housing. We have East Bay Flats, and that will, we just got our tax credits. We got them, well, we actually got them two years ago, but we finally found someone to buy the tax credits. So we'll be able to put $6 million into reconstruction, and we'll also get rental subsidy with that, that'll allow us to put 25 chronic individuals in, Onika Place Two, which is off Garfield. We will have, we're adding some units, we'll be a part of the project with WODA, we'll attend individuals who are experiencing homelessness, be able to stay there as well. We're trying to get as many people as we can off the streets. If we can bring that number down from 70 to 50 to 40 to 30, our goal is to try to get to zero. We can reduce overall cost to the community and have better outcomes. We save money, and we have better outcomes. So one of the things I just want to end with is, so East Bay Flats, we have started moving people into East Bay Flats already, because we've owned that building for two years now. And with the folks we moved in, who prior to coming into that building were experiencing homelessness, most of them were chronic, people, people who are chronically homeless, the ones that have been homeless a year or more and have a disability, have had great social outcomes. We're seeing people getting connected to a primary care physician, people are being able to get surgeries they've been putting off, people have been able to get jobs, getting benefits, joining faith communities, and getting engaged more successfully in the community. So not only are we reducing costs, but we're getting better social outcomes for the individuals as well. So closing thoughts. First thing is, Goodwill is a local nonprofit organization. Homelessness is a housing problem, and the fact that there is ways to solve this, that we can, as a community, get at this issue. In fact, right now, we actually have, a few folks are involved in it, but we have, we have a task force on housing homelessness, that the community is a mixture of community members, public and private sector members, can talk around, talk around the issues of housing and homelessness, and how can we do a better job. We have a couple of task forces. We have a task force on shelter, task force on housing development, and a task force on safety and basic needs. The goal is that hopefully in January or February, they will have some recommendations that the community as a large can look at and possibly implement. And we will probably be coming back here at some point to have that conversation with you guys as well. Because there's a way for us to do something better that's cheaper and has better outcomes, and we just hope you guys will be open to that when it comes along.
Would you take some questions?
Yeah, I think I'd be happy to.
I'll start. I just have a question on, it was interesting to me, first of all, that 70 was the chronic homelessness in our area. I guess I perceived it to be larger than that. So that seems like a man, I mean, a number that is, you can tackle.
Right.
How, when they're in the home, and you mentioned that three-legged stool, how do they receive those services? So do you need to have them co-located near something? Is it the transportation that's a key? Is it, is it having so many together that you, you know, you have somebody visit the homes, the site of the apartments? How does that work?
Yeah, so we'll talk about, there's two different methods. One is if it's in a unit, like we own, East Bay Flats or Carson Square, which is another property that we own, the case managers are actually on-site. So we actually have, for East Bay Flats, there's going to be 63 people eventually would be living there. Well, we have three case managers, they'll be working with them on a regular basis every day, in some cases. Some people don't need as much, it might be every couple of weeks, but usually they're on-site. So we actually have someone there to work with them directly. And depending on what their needs are, some need more, some need less, but it's, it's a goal is to help and get them stabilized and connected into the community. As we, I'm sure everyone has read at some point in another isolation, social isolation is a key predictor of longevity and healthy lifestyle. So we want to try to connect people who primarily have been very socially isolated. This is not a group, a population that people tend to turn to. So this, so helping them to be able to connect more effectively to the community, and for the community to more effectively connect with them. And it's really helpful to get them stabilized, because without taking away that fight or flight, that fight or flight, it's very difficult to move the needle. There's, they're in the mode of today, with my survival, not what I should be thinking about a week from now, or a month from now, or six months from now. When you get them stabilized, then you're able to move things forward much more effectively. So we have to have housing-based case manager, and that's been Goodwill's commitment, that anyone that we help get housing, regardless if it comes with a subsidy or not, we will provide housing-based case management, because we want, we know it's successful, and we're willing to make that investment.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I'm just curious, of the, of the 70 that are chronically homeless, are there, is there a percentage? I'm sure there's some that maybe not, not successful, or maybe not willing to participate?
Yeah, it's interesting, because one of the things, we look at a lot of data. So one of the things we looked at is, how many people were homeless like three or four years ago, and whether they're still homeless, and there's not anyone who's still homeless. So I will say, it doesn't, it doesn't happen right away. I mean, there's a, for a few folks, there's a lot of distrust. And we, we have veterans who aren't willing to work with the VA. And if they work with the VA, I will tell you, because we do a lot of work for the VA, there's a lot more resources in the VA system. And it's, you know, it's sad, you know, and it's, but, you know, sometimes it's taken, takes years to kind of break down that wall. And a key part of what we do is like, when someone says no, it's no for now, and we just stay with them, and we stay with them, and we stay with them. And then, you know, we've had folks that we've worked with a number of years, and finally they're, you know, like, okay, I'm willing to try it. I'll try it, you know? But it's, I'm not saying there's not moments of frustration at times, because like, it's right here. And we've had people who had housing, like, right there, and just weren't able to close the gap. But we do provide it for someone else, but still, sometimes it takes a while.
Chair, Wendy. On that same line, you used the term "in the system" a couple of times. How many aren't in the system? Are they not in the system because they don't trust the system?
Yeah, I'm not sure what context they're using, I don't know, like, why I said that.
You were talking about the number of people in the system.
Yeah, so there's a, there's, we try to divert people before they come into like the homeless response system. So like, if they come and just do a call, and we're able to divert them, then we don't count them in our system. So when, but there's like a threshold, at some point where they're not, we're not able to divert them, then they come over, and then we have to put them into the system, and now they're, then we have to count them towards all those different outcomes. So it's just like a, a point where like, when they're outside, where we kind of try to divert them, and when the, the level of service is higher, that we have to now start counting them towards the numbers.
But does a person have to come to you?
Yeah, also, we do have coordinated entry, and that's, it's a way for us to ensure that the people that we're serving are the people who most need it. So they don't necessarily come to Goodwill. Actually, we don't do that part of the process. It's the 1-800 number they use, it calls NMCA, and that person, that they will work and say, hey, where you been, where have you been? Where were you staying last night? Where were you staying a couple of weeks ago? And try to figure out there's other solutions to their homelessness. If that doesn't work, then, at that point, they do come to us. And we still have a diversion worker that supports them again, goes a little bit deeper, and tries to find a different, another solution, try to be creative, like, well, that brother, you didn't get too long, go get a, you got a fight with. Are you sure he may not be able to take you back? Or, yeah, I know you broke that one thing, but what if we pay to get that fixed? What do you take you back? So we have different levels of diversion that we use in the, in the process.
So I guess my question is, until somebody reaches out, they are not counted in the numbers, correct?
Okay, I'll clarify that. So we do have street outreach. So I have three adult outreach workers, a youth outreach worker, and a family outreach worker. So we actually go out into the streets. We go into the, you know, go into the parking lots, and, you know, go into the forests and different places where we know people are congregating, and we can, we try to connect them to services. So even if they don't come to us, we're going to them. So that, that's actually, you know, glad you asked that question, actually. So if something comes up, you should call us. If you say, you see someone you didn't, you haven't recognized, and you're wondering if they may need some additional help, you can reach out to us, and then we'll go out and send a street outreach worker to them, and try to connect them, figure out what their situation is. So we do proactively try to get out there as well. But we do kind of rely on, you know, you know, we have the sheriff here, lieutenant here, that, we work with them for us, you know, kind of work in partnership, if they notice something going on, that we will go out there. Or libraries, a lot of times, are folks that kind of notice someone who they haven't seen in, they've seen before, they'll contact us. So, you know, you guys definitely need to be the eyes and ears for us out there, for the folks who may not be in the system yet. Did I answer now? No, it took me a couple of minutes.
Well, you still didn't tell me how many you think aren't in the system.
We think, well, I know, we estimate it's about 30 folks who are street, unsheltered street homeless. Did I get there finally?
Yeah.
Good.
That's good to know, though, because I know when, when, you know, we come upon like a, an area that we think that some homeless have been at, that's on public property or something like that, I contact our CPOs, because they have a good way of, of working with them and trying to get them resources, and also letting them know that they can't stay there. So that's also a good resource for us to know here, that we can as well contact you, or our CPOs can contact you as well.
Definitely, that would be a perfect connection. Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions?
I just have one. How many do you feel, either in or out of the system, that are coming from outside of, I don't know, I can't remember what you said you cover, but from outside, like, I've, I've personally dealt with people from like Alpena, Mayo, Charlevoix. Some of them come down for medical issues, but then have no place, you know, they don't have a means to find a place to stay, or, you know, they're sleeping on the beach in the summer and waiting for their appointment, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we do, we do, that's, that's part of the kind of people, might be this kind of a flash in the pan, they might be here for a little bit. But we have had people who have been sent down here.
Yeah, I've had that too.
Yes, I have it as well. And then, you know, we work with whoever sent us to understand that's not how the system works. And we work to get them back to where they can best support it, because we, we wanted people to be in a place where they know other people. They have, you know, their social resources, and they have other connections. It's not helpful for someone to be in a place where they have no connections.
Right.
And we would say, like, why are you going to, people, we want to come down here. Why would you come down? You know anyone here? You know, it's, this is, you know, this is an expensive place to live. So we really do work to try to get people back. We have, we have sent people back in the community where they can be best supported. Now, we won't send anyone to a place where they don't have a place to go. But the folks like that, they're not here for very long. Yeah, they're in and out.
Some.
Some. Well, let me know about the ones who aren't, because we can work with them if they're not connected or writing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Dan, thank you very much for being here. When Deb Lake reached out, and I talked with her about this topic, I thought it would be great for you to present to our board. We work so much on the housing issue, you know, zoning ordinances and proper development in the right places, that, you know, we talk a lot about workforce housing, but there's a whole nother component to housing and homelessness, and, and that's, I was glad to have you come and present to us.
Yeah, and feel free, I know you had to get a contact, contact me, feel free to reach out if you have a question, or if you, someone that you feel like is not connected in some way, not in the system, feel free to reach out, and we'd be happy to help out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, with that, we will, hey, Dan, if you wouldn't mind just closing that top of that laptop right there, we're good to go. Thank you. We'll move on with the Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Office. Hi, undersheriff, how are you? Very good to have you.
Good, great to be here. Randy Fueles, Grand Traverse County undersheriff. Just wanted to, Sheriff Shay and I both had told you guys that we would come back annually, just to kind of give you an update on the flock safety cameras, that you guys are gracious enough to be allowing us to use as a resource to help your citizens and businesses here. Thought I would just, like I did last time, just kind of touch on a few cases that we've used the flock cameras for, just so you're aware of that. But they've continued to be a great success for us. A lot of the, a couple of the complaints I'll talk about today, I mean, we just have nothing. I think last year, when I was here, I talked about the business on Business Park Drive that was targeted by like eight people who weren't even from the area, but with descriptions of the vehicles, we were able to use the flock safety cameras to get license plates, and I, we identified all eight and got them all put in jail for some pretty significant damage that they had done to one of your businesses here or so. And without the cameras, we would have never had that. So we're continuing to find that, because we do have a lot of people who come here from the area, from out of the area, who victimized people here. We had actually a organized crime group who is from the south part of the United States that came to not only northern Michigan, but were in other states up north here, just, basically their method of operation was, they would go to parking lots, even in the middle of the daytime, break windows out of cars, steal purses, identification, and then they would use that personal information to commit check frauds with, things like that. So it was a pretty significant deal. They were here for a short period of time. We had, what was, what was kind of cool about it was, so we had some business camera footage that was able to show us the vehicles, and we were able to see a license plate. So you're thinking, okay, this is great, give us something to go on. Well, they were all stolen license plates from the vehicles. Well, during the criminal's travels, they travel with the real license plates on them[1637.33] because they don't want to get stopped and identified, and have their cars towed for having stolen plates on them. So when they're about to commit the crime is when they swap the plates out. Well, we were able to use the vehicles that we saw on that CCTV footage that we had, were able to find those vehicles the day prior when they had the license plates that were supposed to be on the vehicle. So we were able to identify four suspects, not from the state of Michigan. The investigator in that was able to then identify the cell phones that they were using. We got search warrants to ping those cell phones. They were in the state of Connecticut at the time, so we worked with authorities out there, ended up getting them arrested, and they're being charged in multi-states. But one of those things where we would have never, without the help of the flock cameras, we would have never been able to identify them. And, you know, they were literally smashing windows out of people's cars here, and so that was a really good use for that. We had a sexual assault victim who was assaulted by someone that she kind of knew she was getting a ride home from, sexually assaulted her and dropped her off right at the end of Holiday Road. And after a day or so, the female victim was able to help the investigators find out through social media who the suspect was. It was a person who wasn't, we didn't know where they were living. We were able to identify a car, a vehicle that we thought they were in. We were able to use, flock safety has what's called a hot list feature, so if we have a wanted person in our area that we want to find out where they're at, so that we don't have other victims, we were able to hot list that license plate. It tripped on one of the East Bay cameras, we were able to get deputies out there, found the car, arrested the guy. He's been since sentenced to ten years in prison for the sexual assault on the female. So, you know, that one, we probably would have identified and maybe eventually located that individual, but with the help of the flock cameras, we were able to find him literally the next day, and maybe potentially save another victim from being assaulted, so. And one final one to mention, we talk about all the crimes we are able to solve with flock cameras, but we had an eighty-nine-year-old man who had left his residence at eight-thirty in the morning and was heading to a doctor appointment, never showed up at the doctor appointment. One-thirty in the afternoon, the family called saying, hey, could you help us find our dad? He, we don't know where he's at, he didn't show up for his doctor's appointment. So we were able to put his vehicle plate in the camera system, and we found that it had, within the past few hours, been constantly tripping on the same cameras. So we sent deputies to that area, ended up finding his vehicle, found him. He was very disoriented, had been driving around in circles for hours. We called EMS, they ended up transporting him to Munson, called the family, they were able to come to Munson and try to now figure out the family situation there. But helped us find the guy before maybe he got in an accident or had a medical emergency of some type. So, so the cameras, although they're, they're great for helping us solve crimes for your residents, they're also being helped utilize in a different type of public safety manner such as that. So there are now, in the state of Michigan, nearly two, twenty-two hundred flock safety cameras, that being in the network allow us, and I can't tell you how many times we've tapped into the system to be able to locate suspects from here, and find out where they're at, where they were coming from. We've been able to utilize that system a lot. There are now over ninety-three thousand flock safety cameras nationwide, and I think the last time I was here in front of you, we had talked about the U.S. Marshals from California calling us out of the blue going, hey, we're searching for a human trafficker that's wanted nationally on federal charges, he's hitting on your East Bay Township cameras, he's in your area. We were able to pattern those trips on the cameras, find him, get him arrested, you know, a real bad guy who we would have never known was in East Bay Township had it not been for those marshals putting that plate in the system and finding out he was here in your township. So the system's been great, we continue to utilize it successfully. We appreciate the partnership with East Bay Township, and again, just can't say enough about the, about the appreciation. We, as I always say, we, we take our jobs very seriously and want to do everything we can, and this is helping us to serve you better, I feel like, so. Happy to answer any questions you might have, if any, on the system, or?
Any questions? I just have a comment, just for people who weren't familiar with the flock system, just so they know, while they are East Bay cameras, and we do pay for them, we do not have access to them. That is with the sheriff's department.
Correct.
And you look at them for specific cases and complaint numbers and so forth.
That is correct. Basically, how the systems operate, they don't have facial recognition, they don't take pictures of people. Basically, it's just a rear car identifier with the plate, so a lot of the concerns that initially people were thinking to have, the education's been a big piece of it, to, to help people understand that this is how we're, how we're using it. But, yeah, so thank you for that question.
Definitely. Well, thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Updating us.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Glad it was helpful in those cases, and unfortunately necessary.
Yeah, and as always, please reach out to us if there's anything we can do.
Sorry, can I ask?
Yeah.
Have we had any more problems with vandalism or anything?
We have not had any more. So what Ms. Bartlett is referring to is, we actually had a couple of our flock safety cameras that were damaged. That was about a year ago. And ironically, the detective who worked those cases, because we, you know, we're obviously concerned about catching who did that, the detective who was working that ended up finding the suspect utilizing the flock safety cameras
[laughing]
from when they had came into town a couple days prior. And so, yeah, so they ended up getting prosecuted. They lived in, I believe it was Waterford Township, downstate, and were up here, actually, they were in the Grayling area, they were some type of movement type cause, and had, were protesting in Grayling for something, and had came over here and decided they wanted to damage some property too, so. Anyway, but, but that was a good story too, so thank you for asking.
I'll say to flock's credit, we didn't have to pay for those repairs.
Right, right.
So flock did that because they were the target of it, not East Bay.
Yes.
And the other time, the only other time we've had any damage
Was a car accident.
has been a car accident, and that's covered under insurance, so.
Yeah.
That's, both of those worked out pretty.
It's been great, and the, the relationship with flock safety's been great too. We, you know, being in northern Michigan, they are solar powered, and so we have a lot of cloudy days in the wintertime, and they have continued to bolster the battery packs on them to make sure that we don't lose function of those, because we're kind of in a unique spot here in northern Michigan for those, lack of sunlight and everything, so. But they've been tremendous and very responsive anytime we've had an issue or a need from them, so.
Well, thank you for your work with the, the flock system.
You're welcome.
Appreciate their resource.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we will move on to Grand Traverse County Road Commission, and I see we have the road commission manager here, as well as a board member. How are you this evening?
Pretty good, yourself?
Good.
All right, Dan Watkins, Grand Sheriff's County Road Commission. Not a huge update from last time I was here. Couple of projects that we finished up, I'm sure everybody's pretty aware of them, Three Mile and Town Line, both those projects came out really good. Three Mile did run over budget. What we ran into there was, because we put that extra lane in there, widened the road, we didn't have enough right-of-way, and the ditches went reestablished themselves, because I do, do smaller ditches. So you'll see a lot of rock, and then we had to go through and armor them, so we had the additional cost of armoring there, I think it was about seventy-five thousand dollars we ran over on that project. But overall, the project came out pretty good. We're also working on planning for next year, looking at all the projects we're planning on doing. So the big one for East Bay Township will be Hammond Road, so we're looking at that one right now. We have it all designed, we're just trying to do a lot, final touches on that one, so we're really close on that project. Trying to find the best timeline of, of when to do it. Obviously, with school and having to go through this intersection right here, we don't want to hit that, so we're trying to figure out if it's better to try to do it, main part of Hammond before, than when school closes, do the second half, or try to do it all after. We're also doing Cass Road next year, so those are two huge projects for us, we're trying to figure out when to stagger them amongst, you know, we do several of our smaller Really winding down on paving here, we're running out of good days. Last couple of projects we're trying to finish up is Barney Road on the west side, and then we just snuck in a project on Bunker Hill Road to be on the east side here, so. They did that project there, the DPW in Acme Township, probably everybody saw, and they were blocking traffic, held up there right by Four Mile. Actually damaged a water line up by the railroad tracks as you're going up Bunker Hill Road. They had to pull permits from the railroad eagle, because they're close to the water, they're having to close the road down, and we decided, while they're in there fixing that, maybe this is a really good opportunity for do that one little section, because they already did all the hard work of pulling those permits, which are not very fun to get. We have a lot of water issues right there, we're out there probably once a month trying to fix a water issue as it runs down into the post office and Ace Hardware, constantly causing issues. So we think this might be a really good opportunity to take care of it. The next thing we're doing, once we get through those couple of projects, is obviously getting them ready for winter. Not that everybody's probably real excited about that here. But, good news, we're really on track this year. So we have thirty plow routes. So our goal is to have half the route, fifteen trucks ready by October fifteenth. That's, we know when it turns October, we get a little bit of snow, so we want to make sure those trucks are ready, we try to get the rest of the fleet ready by November first. Currently, we're sitting at nineteen plow trucks ready to go right this second. They've been calibrated, they're ready to go. If we got snow this minute, we could send nineteen trucks out ready to go. As far as material, we're getting the last bit of our salt in, actually, they're delivering it today. A big thing for us is our wing blades, our bolts, the nuts, all the things that makes us run, all our spare parts, those are in, so we're, we're ready to go here. One last thing I want to touch on, we, they just finished up, I think I talked about this maybe last time I was here, that we're going to do that countywide car count. We're going to do it every road within the county, see what the counts are. We've never done that before, there's always been like primary roads, there's roads that have never been hit. There's roads that, in the last twenty years, we don't have any data on it, so for the first time, we're going to have full data on all of our road system. So right now, we're kind of compiling that all together, hoping to get that on a map, like a point and click, so more on that to come, but hopefully that's something the townships will be able to use too, we'll make that data available to everybody. That's all I had tonight. Turn it over to the commissioner.
Dan, oh, just a quick question.
Ask Dan questions, he's the guy.
Dan, any, any calculation yet on what some of the recent budget is for the state, what that will mean, specific for Grand Traverse County?
The final numbers are still coming in, they're kind of advising, like, don't give me, you know, solid numbers. It's not what they were talking about by any means. Pretty much, it's probably going to be keeping up with inflation and maybe doing an extra project a year.
Okay.
Maybe a little, maybe, maybe two projects. You know, originally, they're talking about doubling our budget, then it was a fifty percent increase, now it's looking at like, maybe a thirty percent
Okay.
increase, so.
All right. Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's fairly often, it'd be kind of equivalent, right now, what we're looking at is, you know, we have the Grand Sheriff's County village here, it'd be equivalent to like the village, so it'd be like having two mills within Grand Traverse County, and we kind of identified that, to get us to where we were just not falling backwards, and maybe starting to get a little further ahead, we needed three mills. So it's kind of taken up, getting us a little closer to that goal.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Dan always has the more important answers.
Hi, Lisa, how are you?
Hi, good. Here to talk about communications, just reminding everybody, we have a YouTube channel, which is pretty exciting, you can subscribe, do it. We have a new series on there that we've been doing with communications, and it is the most frequently, we call it the most frequently asked questions, but it's probably the most frequently read complaints. So we highlighted, I hosted a series interviewing Dan and another commissioner, and just kind of covering all of the frequent roads that we all hear about a lot, and the answers that we say a lot. It's great information for you guys, because I know your constituents in the townships reach out to you, and you can get some real good direct information there. Make sure that you follow us on Facebook, we put all of those communications out weekly, there is details on every project that we're doing, every single thing that you'll need to know going on at the road commission. And again, just really pushing to your constituents, the report a problem. It's really easy to find on something like a laptop or on your mobile phone, the minute you log into Grand Traverse County's Roads Commission website, the first thing is, report a problem. And one of the things we're trying to really get out there is that it isn't an email that goes to Dan's desk and sits there, or the engineering team, it goes right to our dispatch crews, and is put on a map. So if you want to say, hey, there's a, you know, a branch down, or there's a dead deer, or there's a big pothole, which is probably the one we hear the most, those will be geolocated on a map, and then we can efficiently send crews out to tackle multiple problems, rather than being inefficient and sending people around in circles. So that's an important thing to think about. We've really highlighted communicating directly with our townships, going to meetings like this, but also reaching out to everybody in any way possible, so most of us, myself included, you know, has like an attention span of like about thirty seconds, so we're trying to do shorter videos to just do one, one, you know, one-minute answers, or half a minute answers on things that you can easily give information to people that are just frustrated about a certain problem or something. You know, one of the things I like to highlight is, you know, if you can avoid using something like Overheard in Traverse City for your actual factual information about what's going on in your community, I would say, please. And then when people on a daily occasion write, what about this road, and this road sucks, and we hear that, what I like seeing now is a lot of comments, like, the road commission literally just made a video about that, you know, just go on their Facebook page. I always say, the same thing you do to post on that site, like a question, you could just go right to our Facebook page, and, and it's right there, so that's something to keep in mind. And then one last thing on communications, I think, you know, our undersheriffs discussion about the flock cameras was interesting. I think for a lot of people, including myself, we don't think about the fact that nationally sought-after sex trafficking rings are in East Bay Township, but they are, and Randy just talked about that. And you think about those cameras and how important they are, and how much data we can get from them. We don't have cameras on all of our intersections, and many of you may know that there was a double fatality, a very tragic accident that happened in the south part of the county that was due in part to somebody running over a stop sign, probably a couple hours before the accident happened, and then somebody crossed through that intersection and unfortunately killed two young people. And then we found out through Dan and his communications, we're not just communicating with our townships, Dan has relationships with road commission managers around the state that Wexford County had the same thing happening. And in all, they determined thirteen signs had been purposefully knocked down. So we don't have flock cameras on everything, and we don't have even road cameras on everything, but all of you live out there, and if anybody sees anything like that, we're just trying to get out communications. If you see a sign down, I will tell you, I'm on the road commission, and I wouldn't have even thought to report it. Hit that, report a problem. We may not know about it. If we do, we would have put it back up. We didn't know that night, and so that, that's unfortunately what happened. So I just want to say, communications is sometimes a pothole or a deer, but it can also be, there's a sign down on my street, so let us know, especially in the more rural areas. So that is it for us at the road commission. One last thing, when accidents happen, many people don't know that above and beyond our fabulous emergency response people and police, people like Dan are dispatched for every single one of those accidents, the road commission is first responders too, and they're out there, and those guys work around the clock, not just doing snow removal in the winter and, and all the other maintenance, but they're there whenever there's some kind of tragedy or accident, so just, you know, give them a wave, something nice. They've read a lot of mean things online lately about roads and people frustrated with traffic, so if you can just give a thumbs up or a nice thing to one of our crew, that would be really great, so, that's it.
Well, I will say, when you read Overheard in Traverse City, I've never found anything to be completely factual, so.
Nope, nope, no, it makes me want to move, to be honest with you, when I read it, but, yeah, it's pretty bad.
And, and I would say, undersheriff Fueles would love for the road commission to participate with the flock system camera if you ever wanted to, especially in those townships that are not participating, because, my goodness, it helps so much.
Well, we're always welcome to a discussion about that, because I know the value of them. My day job, I've, I've been involved in criminal investigations, that flock is certainly something that we talk about, so.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Also want to thank the road commission for their partnership and, and help with the safe routes to school, as far as, you're the Act 51 agency, and then as well, participation with the TAP grant request on the Three Mile Trail, so really appreciate the road commission on that partnership, so.
The road turned out great, and so did the trail, and I look forward to the extension going all the way out. I think it's a really cool design, and I know I'm the trail nerd on the road commission board, probably it doesn't excite Dan and the guys as much, but I think it's a really cool trail design, and I'm excited to see where that goes, because it is a, it's a great one, so, anyways.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I just remembered a question, Dan. Are the speed limit signs going back up on Town Line? Do you know?
Oh, whoops, sorry.
Yeah, I can answer that. There actually was no signs that are supposed to be there, they're actually illegal signs that were in place.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we.
I've had a couple people ask.
Sure, we, we talked about that a little bit, that, you know, we have signs that get stolen and missing, but we also have people put signs in, because they want speed limits lowered.
They just put their own speed limit signs.
Well, I know, I've seen, you know, twelve miles an hour or something through, you know, some subdivisions and stuff.
It's actually a pretty involved process to actually get a road to a certain speed, and there's a reason behind it and studies. I don't tell you how many people want to do speed studies, and I want the speed limit slower, you know, and different things like that, but they're set for a reason, they've, they've been researched pretty thoroughly, so it's really hard to get them lowered or changed.
Okay.
And we're watching, Garfield Township has just requested a speed study too, that they're putting in through MDOT, and so we're kind of watching that process as well.
Right, I saw that too.
There's a resident on Town Line who had reached out, yeah.
Okay. Now that it's so well, I mean, now that you can actually drive on it, but, okay.
One thing to think about speed limits too, the law just changed on that, and so one of the things people have to realize is, when they request a speed limit study, you know, it's a three-way partnership between MDOT, the township, and the road commission, You have to abide by what it says. And what's interesting is the speed limit studies are done based on the average rates that people are traveling. They are going to make an assumption that the average rates traveling are safe. So for instance, Lefrani Road is a great example, which is what Garfield's doing now. And I have a feeling that that will end up being higher than what people think. So if people are traveling on a road that we all think should be 45 or 35, but it's currently 55 and if people are driving at 55 average, well, that is, must be abide by. So the person that initiated the study is sad because they asked for it to go down to 35 and now it goes up to 55. So people should read the law. Michigan just changed their law on how that works and there's a lot of nuances to it that are important.
Yeah, we had some of the same discussion years ago on four miles, so.
Yeah.
It's actually interesting because all of our local and primary roads are usually designed at 55 miles an hour. So if it does come back that people are traveling 60, 65, we don't raise it above 55. But the M roads, you'll see a lot of local M roads like 37, those are all 55. M roads are designed to a higher speed. You've seen a lot of those go to 65 miles an hour based off of those kind of studies showing that need to be raised.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Nice question, real quick. On the, on the Hammond Road, you said that would be, which is, which is all this out here, all the way back to town line, I guess was the last, where they stopped last time?
Yep.
That's going to be for next summer?
Yeah, it would be spring, summer, 2026.
I guess considering the, the, the volume of traffic that's on that road, probably more so during the summer, even with the kids out of school, I mean, it gets backed up, gets busy. Is there going to be any need or would it be a benefit to have any kind of town hall meeting or open house or some kind of discussion to prep for that early next year? I don't know if we could host it here.
We're YouTube video.
We love making YouTube.
I mean, something, something along the lines of what MDOT did, you know, at the, out there on the parkway to get people engaged and, you know, maybe have some dialogue, educate people about what's about to happen.
Road commission staff's been really good about, whenever we request meetings, we typically do that with special assessment districts, but they'll, I'm sure do it with any project that they're doing, you know, have an open house just to show people the plans and the diversion routes and so forth.
And that particular project isn't a total shutdown, so there isn't a design detour for that one, is there? Or will there be a total shutdown with the design detour?
Those are the some of the things we're still trying to discuss and hammer out. One of the positives is obviously three mile just being redone, if we have to divert traffic that direction.
And I guess the next question is, it probably wouldn't be on tap for next summer, but what's, what's the future of the, the east side of South Airport?
South Airport, that's, that's probably going to be a little ways out.
Really?
Yeah, I know it's something the MPO was talking about. I know Beth's on the MPO as well, so.
So ways out, it's not, it's not even in the.
It's not like I'm, you know, right now we're trying to look like one year out, maybe two years. It's not on the next year to, to radar currently.
We've also put in for some grant funding that would help facilitate that whole George Street neighborhood connecting with the three mile trail in a safe way, knowing that they have a really tight right of way and space in that area.
That road, there's not much right of way there. So you're probably looking at purchasing of peoples, you know, maybe a little bit of property so you can actually, to even get a three lane road in there is going to be tough. So it's going to be quite the project to figure out.
Yeah, and we're also looking at different alternative routes too, that might, you know, trail behind some of the subdivision as well. So we'll see if we get that grant.
I was more concerned about the pavement.
Yeah, no, it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty rough there. Yep. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, I, I don't think either of our county commissioners were able to be here tonight. They did email me, so if they're here and I'm just not seeing them, just give a shout. Nope, okay. We'll move on to our internal reports, pending items, assessing department. Ryan, how are you? Good. I think you're doing pretty good too.
My name's Ryan Porty, I'm the assessor here in East Bay Township. Got about a year and a half in now, so I mean, I feel like I'm almost a local, which I know is not true. I can't be a local for like 20 years or something like that. We're about halfway through the assessment cycle right now. I think we're doing pretty well. We're on, on track to, you know, have our, have our things done on time. Last year at this time, I was replacing the person that I hired and got a new dynamo person, Isaac, in and he's, he's been fantastic for us. So we've been spending a lot of time getting our calculations together for land values, ECFs. I can explain what that is at the end of the report, there's a spot that, that talks about that. But we're doing a really good job of communicating with our residents when they come into the building. It's very important to me that if you come in with a question, that we have somebody in the office that's available to answer that question or at least look into it and get back to you in a, in a quick fashion. I don't know how it was before, but I've had a lot of residents that have been very thankful of that. Isaac is fantastic at it. He gets back to people, he goes out and helps them out in the front part and we can bring them back in. And it seems to be something that people have really enjoyed. So that's something we want to have transparency and have the assessor be assessable that if you want to talk to us and find out what's going on, we're more than open to do that. And East Bay Township's given us all the resources to be able to do that kind of thing. We've, we've gotten our iPads out there and the software to go out in the field and be able to really knock it out of the park when we're out there. The machines take the pictures, they log them back in, we're saving all kinds of hours. And, and it helps out for the residents if they call in with the software and the things that we have available through BSNA. All of these things, we attach to the parcel and you can see your picture. If Isaac was out there yesterday, the picture's uploaded the next day and it, and it's there and, and you can see any of the documents that come in, land lot splits, deeds, the property transfer affidavits, principal residence exemptions, any of that stuff gets loaded up almost immediately as it comes in. And I'm really happy at how our office is doing that. Some of the things that we're doing, we're supposed to, we're supposed to visit 20% of our properties a year. It's about 1,600 parcels. Some of those are personal property parcels, some of the things are actually can't really visit, so it's probably a little bit less than that. But Isaac's, and myself, I shouldn't just say him, but he, he's processed up to date 635 deeds of properties that have transferred in the township. He's been out physically on 405 property inspections. He's also reviewed 326 parcel records just at his desk, kind of going through. We have a really good GIS mapping system. We have a really good Eagle View system, which allows you to zoom around a property and see kind of the things that are there and we're allowed to kind of do that to help do our updating of, of things. Myself, I'm more of an office guy. I, I've done a lot of my, I've done a lot of my field work earlier in my career. I do do it if I need to, but Isaac's really kind of my field guy. What I've been doing is I've been condensing our neighborhoods around here. When I got here, there was about 79, 80 different neighborhoods. I've condensed that down to about 22, 23. Basically what that means is you have like houses. So houses that are, or neighborhoods that are all like 20 years old, they can kind of be valued together because they're, they're the same age, they're the same type of property, the same type of construction. So instead of when a new neighborhood comes in and I only have 20 parcels over here, that was a neighborhood. And they, you had to do statistical analysis on that neighborhood and figure out what that neighborhood was selling for. Well, maybe nothing sold in there. So what we've done is we've been able to expand this out, get ourselves up to five, six, 700 properties that we're using. Hopefully you can get five, six, 10% of properties changing hands. It gives you a good statistical analysis so that we can get a good basis of what is happening and how we're changing value in our neighborhoods. Same type of thing in our land tables, this is another thing I've been doing. We, we've hundred and some different land tables and some of those land tables had a $70,000 lot in 14 different places. Well, those have all been condensed into one, so I have, I'm down to 30 different areas now for land values. Again, every time I have a different land value, I have to have a different set of statistics to run. The more properties I have, the stronger those numbers are and the better it is to come up with a good value for what's happening out in the neighborhoods. What I'm finding is there is a, a time where the, in order to get to the values, Traverse City's values were going up. In order to do that, they were saying that a 50-year-old house was, well, maybe it's only 15 years old. Well, if it hasn't been really updated, it really isn't a 15-year-old house. So what's happened is we had to get our land values up so that our buildings can be valued at what they actually are. When I've gotten land values to where they're supposed to be, all of a sudden, oh, it's a 20-year-old house, it's a Class C plus five and look at that, it hits the number that it's supposed to be. So really working hard to do this kind of stuff is going to make it better, make our values more consistent so that I have two houses next door to each other that are essentially the same. They should value out relatively the same and in the same way with the same value. So what we're finding this year, it looks like our values or the sales are actually coming down. We've been averaging probably 10 to 12% across the residential class for the last couple of years. We work with studies with the county and we work together. Residential class is going to be at about 6% this year. Commercial class is about 3%, industrial at 4% and the agricultural class is actually going up 12%. East Bay had probably for the first time in a long time, four or five really big agricultural properties that sold. Now, it happened to be all owned by the same person that sold these, but it is kind of pushing value. Now, for agricultural classes, the county actually gives us some of this stuff and it's across the whole central part of the county. So forgive me if I do this wrong, but Long Lake, Blair, us, Acme? Kind of is across the central, so then you have going north, Peninsulas all by themselves. And then Lower Side, which would be Grant and.
Paradise.
Paradise and all those would be at the Lower Side. So there's three tiers of where those are. We're in that central tier and we kind of get all our statistics mashed in together with that central group because we're all kind of the same type of thing. So about 12% in the agricultural area. Michigan Tax Tribunal cases, we only have two outstanding ones right now. The Residence Inn, big hotel that's taken a while to get up online. They're taking us to tribunal for the value of that property. And we also had Holiday Village, which is some condos out, Vale type area. They got their 2024 case reopened because they had a lawyer who kind of stumbled and quit and didn't do anything. So that got reopened, but that's the only other one that's there. And that actually has a stipulation that's pending right now, I was talking with their lawyer earlier today. Our office is up to date on all our education. We have to do 16 credit hours a year to continuous education, plus another four for anything that are the new state tax commission updates for the year. Myself, Isaac Ence and Beth Friend are all up to date on, on those things because we all had our education for certification. All our board members for our board review are up to date right now. Let's see. Looking ahead, our, our assessing office is looking into hopefully you letting us buy a car that the assessing office can use and also the other departments within the township. Right now, we're doing our own vehicles with mileage and we've reached out to all the local dealerships and have a few, I think four, I think four have come back in to kind of give us an idea how much that would cost. We plan on presenting that to you in November. So hopefully you will come on board and do that for us. Isaac, who is not here today, has been enrolled in the Level 3 assessing program, which is the certification level you need to be the assessor for East Bay Township and probably 90% of the communities across the state, it would be a high enough level. Isaac's, he's dynamic, he's good at what he does and I'm not going to be here forever. And you really want to hone your own people inside and if you're going to pay to educate them, you want to keep them around. We'd like to keep him around. So he has started this program, which is a hybrid online and going in person, eight times to Lansing. Takes about a year to run this program and he's excited to do it. He's a little nervous, but he's going to do just fine. We have a final board review for December, for 2025, it's in December. It's basically to fix any mistakes and things that got missed. We don't actually see people to complain about their, their values at that time. That will happen in March, March 2026. Our board review days are March 3rd, March 9th and March 10th. We will see residents on the 9th and 10th based on if they make an appointment. That'll all be on their assessment notices, which will come out at the end of February. Again, I'm very happy to be up here, the, the staff, we all kind of cover for each other today. We had to, we had to act like the treasurer's office because the treasurer's office was coming for the clerks and the clerks weren't here and then the planning department went out and everybody was doing a really good job. And I, I really feel welcome, I'm happy to be here and get a chance to talk to you. You have any questions?
If you get a chance to come in and say hi to Ryan, you might see about one day a week that he's got a great canine friend with him, Tatum, perfect chocolate lab, that all the residents who come in seem to adore him. Don't worry if you come in and you're not dog friendly because we have a place to put him so we can address your questions during that time. But he's a, he's a great, he's a great asset to the, to the office as well.
He's one of several, there's several dogs that come into the office.
We are dog friendly.
We're, we're happy to have them.
We are dog friendly. Just, just a couple points. I know that this board's heard me say that I, I do think that we struck on something very good in the assessing department with Isaac and with Ryan. You guys are a great team. You play on each other's strengths and really bring out the best in each other. The board of review, I want to mention to you, that's something every two years, that board of review has to go through their, a class that they take. I think it's about a four-hour class, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a four-hour review class that they, usually somewhere in the county or one of the local counties close by. And it's free for them to do usually, I think.
Yeah, or really reasonable.
Or $25 or something like that.
Exactly. And they kind of go over what they have the authority to, to handle at the different board of reviews during the year. And we are really looking forward to Isaac going through that class. Ryan's right, he's, he's, he's excited about it, but just maybe slightly nervous. So if you see him, give him a, you know, bump on the shoulder and, and let him know that he's going to do great because I know he will. And yeah, I don't know the, I don't have the times down here for our March board of review or you, you know, don't have the time, but it's usually, we have that posted.
Yeah, it'll be posted. The Monday is a six-hour session, it's usually from nine to three. And then the next one is from three till six because you have to have, no, no, three till nine because you have to have three hours after six o'clock. So we do two six-hour sessions to complete our 12 hours requirement. And it's usually more than enough right now.
Any questions for, for Ryan? Hey, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
For the meeting. Okay, with that, we will move on to Parks Commission. I think we have two Parks Commissioners here, Garrison Reardon and Stephanie Studzinski. How are you guys tonight? Yeah, and there's a report in our correspondence as well for Parks Commission.
Yeah, so you have what we have here. I just wanted to kind of go over some of the highlights quickly, not take up too much of your time. I got a busy meeting tonight. Starting off with, one of the bigger things we've done is the East Bay Corners Farmers Market. We had another good year with that despite the three-mile construction, obviously. It's always going to be a part of our life up here, but that did cut down some numbers. We're hoping to bounce back to more normal numbers next year. One change they did do is we're offering some craft vendors now. We found, especially early in the season before a lot of produce was ready, it was hard to get consistent weekly vendors and without that, it's hard to have a consistent market. So opening up so there can be some more craft vendors, give us a more consistent vendors every week, but while trying to keep food the focus, that's what it's kind of all about. A program that we implemented this year there is called the Power of Produce, which was really cool, engaging East Bay Township youth in the school systems here into fun, all sorts of different activities. I actually kind of crashed one with my one-year-old. The Grand Traverse County Health Department did Taste the Rainbow in your packet where they had all sorts of different colored foods, cut them up and all the kids got to try it. Everyone was really engaged, had a good time. And even a lot of the public people that were kind of just watching from afar, like what's going on? It seems like they're having fun over there. Really complimented the, the demonstration to see all the kids eat their vegetables without like any pushback whatsoever. They're all having a blast. Moving on to some other things, the Holiday Woodlands Natural Area, that's an ongoing piece of property we're trying to develop into more recreation. We did just approve the plan moving forward for that and we're currently trying to get some grant funds to help develop trails and, you know, get that parking lot signage, things like that, the core of getting that more on the, on the up and up with the community. Game Night at Grace McDonald's, our, some of our annual events we're doing in the summer was fun. I went out there with some cornhole boards and played with some of the, the kids and their parents and we did offer, again, we got an ice cream truck out there. So that was nice, they provided, we covered the bill for the kids and their parents to go get a sweet treat. My only feedback was maybe a bigger sign about the free ice creams, there seemed to be some confusion. I had to kind of offer people, like, did you get ice cream? It is free and then they took off running.
That was a hot day too, wasn't it?
Yes.
Very, very hot day, yeah. Moving on with Grace McDonald's, we're doing kind of combined two big projects. The cornhole games are going to be poured into concrete form as well as the. Structure on top of the sledding hill that.
Pavilion?
Pavilion, thank you. The pavilion's getting retrofitted to be more of a warming hut in the wintertime for the sledding party and things like that. Due to it being a ton of concrete work, we're trying to make it really continuous ADA mobility all throughout the park. We're doing both those at the same time to save on mobilization cost. Further on down the line, at Grace McDonald's, we're looking into a dog park at the old athletic fields that are kind of tucked off in the back. Currently, it's mostly what it is used for, according to our maintenance, is people just taking their dogs back to the fetch. And it's something we don't have on the east side, you know, Silver Lakes got a great one over there. There's one in town, there's a new one now on the west side there by Keystone, but there's nothing really over here for East Bay residents. So that's something that's coming down the line, but part of that concrete work is ahead of time, we would create continuous sidewalk leading up that way as well. So when that does come online, we'll already have the pavement in for that. Jen's Park, we completed a project last year there and then just the last little thing we did was some poison ivy remediation, which was kind of bad down there. And as someone who's very allergic, I appreciated that, I was not the one remediating it. And they did put in a new swing with some nice bark and stuff below it. So it's a nice little kind of sunset spot as well as there's two new concrete pads with tables and grills. It's really nice down there now. And I've heard that feedback from people all down there at the beach. And then lastly, do you want to take any of these, Stephanie?
No, you can.
Okay. The little libraries, we have been upgrading those at all the parks as we do projects. They're now a little bit cleaner, they're kind of like a trex stacking composite boards, they're a little bit more maintenance. They're kind of like a treck stacking composite boards, so they're a little bit more maintenance-free. They have a little bench right now too, so you can kind of sit down and read if you want. And we'll be adding two more of those to Pine Grove and Killingsworth. They're already at Jen's and Arbutus Five right now in Grace. And then lastly, Arbutus Number Five, that was a real big project that finished up last year, and anyone that went there this summer will know it was packed all, all summer long. You know, it's kind of got a great natural division where there's lots of kids and families swimming on the beach area on the right, and then tons of fishermen and angler on the pier and towards the left there, and lots of little tables people could sit and eat at, and new bathrooms as well, which is really nice. But since there is a lot more usage, we're also going to add more garbage cans just because that was kind of the main thing with all the usage, is a bit more litter out there and fishing line, bait, things like that. That is what I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a suggestion. I actually took my kids out a couple of Fridays ago to Grace McDonald's. They like playing around out there. Took some, went and got some food to go, and we sat in the picnic tables. And there was a couple of people out there playing with their dogs. They, dogs were hot, they needed some water, so they, they used the, the human water fountain to maybe, maybe get a dog water fountain with the dog bark.
That is included in the plans. It'll be three different, essentially caged-in, partitioned areas. We'll have one that'll always be growing fresh grass and a small dog and a large, large dog one rotating, but there will be water provided for the dogs there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I hope you like the new picnic tables they put in.
They were nice.
Oh, good. Good, good. All right, thank you very much. We will move on to the planning and zoning. Claire, how are you doing?
Good. Nice.
Good. We have quite a few things under planning and zoning. Would you like to start off? We've got the corridor improvement and plan first.
Sure. Okay, so this agenda item is a three-part agenda item, so there's three actions that, for your consideration this evening. But if you'll recall, back in June, the Township Board decided to, you approved a resolution with an intent to establish the corridor improvement authority. Subsequently, in August, you held a public hearing to consider the corridor improvement authority. We received quite a bit of public input throughout that process. We had a couple different public open houses this summer, one here at the Township Hall, one at Hopscotch had really good attendance, as well as quite a bit of input and attendance throughout that, at the public hearing, as well as throughout the process. Did want to kind of talk a little bit about the process that we've gone through to identify the corridor improvement authority board members that are for consideration this evening. We have been working with an implementation team over the past year. And so the implementation team, many of those members are kind of transitioning into recommendations for our corridor improvement authority board. The implementation team, when it was first established, was, the desire was to be very reflective of the corridor, including business owners as well as residents. We have had a few of the residents that served on that corridor improvement authority have moved out, kind of moved on. And so as was brought up, we are seeking additional residents to serve on that, on that corridor improvement authority. You'll see in terms of the recommendation of individuals for the corridor improvement authority board, we have a number of individuals that would be voting members, and then we also have liaisons. I will mention that a few of those liaisons are property owners on the corridor, for example, the Leon Conservancy, as well as the DNR State Park. They felt more comfortable being in kind of a more, a liaison role as opposed to serving on the board, which is part of the reason why, why we continue to seek some additional board members. We did want to just mention, you know, the implementation, in terms of, you know, getting the message out to the public, all of our implementation team meetings have been notice, public meetings, haven't had a lot of public attendance at those. We have had a notice posted on the township website since August for vacancies on the corridor improvement authority board, although the board wasn't established, just noticing that we were intending that there would be a corridor improvement authority board with vacancies, as well as we published, news article was right on the front of our website. So in terms of moving forward with the, with the board members, we would hope to, we were hoping to have the board members appointed this evening. I did want to mention that Steve Ferengue is a tribal member and is interested in serving as a representative for the tribe. There's a large tribal property in the district that they're working towards conservation on, and the, the tribe was interested in being engaged in that process as well. So he has agreed to serve in that capacity. We also have connected with a few different residents in, in the neighborhoods that, that potentially could be interested. And tonight, if you decide, you could appoint the board members as listed, with the understanding that we would come back to you as we identify additional residents. We, based on state statute, you can have five to nine members on the corridor improvement authority board, plus the highest elected official. So we've got five to nine members, plus Beth is required to also be on the, on the board, but that's in addition to, to the five to nine individuals.
And the liaisons don't count, yes?
They are not voting members, we anticipate, just because they've been very engaged with the process. We've got, you know, Tart Trails and Beta, MDOT. So it's really helpful to have them engaged throughout the process. But yeah, they would be attending the meetings as non-voting members. The next thing, oh, go ahead.
You had mentioned that you're going to look at the neighborhood for members.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a timeframe? I mean, are we talking, you would, within the next month or two, you'd bring the names back?
I'd anticipate by the November meeting, we'd have a few additional names to bring back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As Claire mentioned, we've, we've sought them and they've been mentioned at other meetings and have been on the website. And I'm not aware of any that have offered that, you know, haven't been added, but, so we'll, Claire will continue to pursue that.
Can I ask how many clips you've had on the website?
No, no ma'am. This is at the board level right now. Thank you.
The other item that I'll just mention is related to the boundary. So there was a few comments about a desire to include more of the residential neighborhoods in the boundary, in the Beach District boundary. When we were going through the planning process, we did have all of the Pine Grove neighborhood included in our, like, visioning boundary, like what we were focused on, as well as quite a bit of four-mile and the residential neighborhoods. In looking at the state statute, we're required to have over half of the ground floor area in the entire district commercial. And so we found that, you know, including those neighborhoods would put us significantly over what state statute allowed for. It's really intended to include areas that are commercial, or areas that support the commercial, or areas that are zoned residential that are, that could be redeveloped into commercial or, or other types of residential, so redevelopment properties. So we, that's, that's part of the reason that you'll see that in the, the difference between our planning focus versus what we're recommending for the corridor improvement authority boundary. I would say this evening, we would be recommending Option Two for the district boundary. I know that we had discussed Option One and Option Two. There's been quite a bit of public input on that, as well as discussion at the implementation team level and at the board level. The, this recommendation is based on significant concerns that have been articulated by, by residents, as well as the letter that you receive, received from their legal counsel. In our research and talking with, with township legal counsel, the township still, we still believe that we're on solid legal footing to include the entire, include all of that residential property. However, there, there, it's never been challenged legally, so there's not case law to support the township's decision. So I guess to summarize that, we feel that the, the, the strong opposition to, to not be included probably outweighs that, that benefit of having them included. We still feel that even without those residential properties included in the district, we still can have some significant focus on those residential neighborhoods, even if they're not officially part of that geographic boundary, especially with the connection to the Tart Trail, to Munson, and kind of those, those surrounding amenities that we're looking at. So I'm happy to answer questions on that. I know it's a little bit of a, yeah.
Yeah. On the four-mile road, I noticed on the east and west side, which is all basically residential, why we would add that in?
Because those proper, two reasons. One is because there's strong support from those neighbors to have a sidewalk connection to four-mile. And by including those residential parcels, we would be allowed to build sidewalk connections to get people from the trail to the district. Secondly, those parcels are more, not all of them, but they're more redevelopment-ready. So there are parcels that could be more conducive to not even a commercial, but maybe, you know, townhouses or something like that. There's, there's more flexibility in those parcels compared to kind of the detached single-family homes that we see along US 31 and Munson.
Thank you.
So the, the, on Option One, the reason that Pine Grove in the gray area is not included is because that threw off the calculation for the commercial versus residential. Okay. And then as a planner, you would recommend Option One, but therefore those residents are seeking not to be included. And while we, while we feel confident that we could include them, they're not wanting, wanting to. You know, it's a shame because I feel like some of the improvements, if they saw in the future, they might appreciate being involved in that corridor. But I think given the fact that they do not want to, and have expressed that, and why be, why do something that even though we feel we're on legal, solid ground, could be contested? Meh, you know? And that area could always be added, correct? I mean, if in the future later, the township board or the residents desired to be included, that could be changed?
Yep, we can always amend the boundary. We'd go through the same process that we went through to create the...
Clarify how... I'm sorry, ma'am. This is, ma'am, this is a township board meeting, and if you have questions, they can be answered later. But right now, what the public is here for is to see the township board do their business. And that is what we're doing. We don't do question and answers during this. Go ahead, Claire.
Remind me of the question.
I was just clarifying that they could be added later.
Oh, yeah. Yep, so you go through the same process for, for amending the boundary as we went through to create the district?
Yeah.
So if we do Option Two, we, we have sidewalk that the township put in all the way on the south side.
Yeah, I thought it was MDOT, but maybe the township assisted with...
The township did that?
No, the township paid for that. We did it at the same time that MDOT did their project, but we paid for that.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't use the CIA money or the TIP money, whatever you want to, to, to maintain that.
Right, that's correct.
So it would not be part of the snow plowing unless the township decided to be able to do that out of our general fund without the CIA money.
Yep, that's correct.
Because we're not including that.
Yep, and that was the original recommendation from staff of why we believe that that would make sense to include.
Right, that's what I thought too. Okay.
I think some of the, the concern of the residents on the north side of that 31 was that, you know, they would have any infrastructure that they have there impeded for something, like maybe sidewalks or something like that. But that was really not at the forefront of, I think, the objectives of the corridor improvement authority.
No. Yeah.
I think the, you know, it was more towards the, the central to eastern side, and then some of the plowing is, as Tracy mentioned.
Okay.
So Claire, tonight you have then three possible motions?
Yeah, so it would be the motion to establish the corridor improvement authority. I did make one minor modification to the resolution, and that was just the, the district boundary. The second possible motion is the adopting the, the corridor improvement authority boundary map, either Option One or Option Two. And then the third one would be to recommend the corridor improvement authority board members, along with their recommended terms of service as outlined in the table. You'll see the terms of service are for three years, but we wanted to stagger them, and that's what they recommend in the state statute. So you'll see that some end in 2026, 27, and 28.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Claire on either of the three subjects within the corridor improvement authority? Well, first I'd say it would be probably helpful for the board to decide whether they were looking at Option One or at Option Two, so that we could clarify with the resolution which map that we're talking about. So what is the board's pleasure with respect to the different maps?
I'm good with, with Option Two. You know, the, I was on the implementation committee, and, you know, I think that really the, the consensus with the committee was that, you know, having Option One allowed obviously the maintenance of the sidewalk, but the continuity of the whole corridor from one end of the township boundary to the other. So, you know, the, I guess the only, the only downside here with going to Option Two is it does prevent that, that continuity all, all the way through the, the boundary of the corridor. But otherwise, I think the, the, you know, concerns with the, the residents there, you know, are understandable. And, you know, I think going with Option Two is probably the best route.
Other thoughts on the maps?
I mean, I think it's unfortunate to go with Option Two, but knowing that we can change it or update it, expand it, sorry, that's the right word, expand it when we do get a full county-wide corridor, because we've talked about that in the past, get a corridor identity for going from the city all the way through. We can expand that so that we would have that continuity. So, I mean, I'd prefer Option One, but I would support Two as well.
Okay. Matt, Mindy, Glenn, thoughts?
I'm good with Option Two.
Okay.
I really prefer, I really prefer Option One for the infrastructure improvements that can be, you know, to, to the township border. I understand that they do not want sidewalks, but there's so much more than, than just the sidewalks that, that could come to that area. And by limiting it, I'm concerned. But if we can change it, if there's a project that makes sense and we can change it, with the blessing of the people in that, that corridor, I, I think, I think Option Two is, makes sense.
Matt?
I'm still likely Option One. You know, I've talked for many, many years about the dangers of the utility poles along that corridor, and part of it is that we, I heard mentioned that there might be a possibility of removing those. And to leave a section up and then...
Well, we couldn't. I don't think the utility companies would let us.
That's the other part, yes. And then, so that's why I kind of favor One, because I, I know the concerns were about the sidewalks. Even if you take the poles out of, there's not enough rooms for sidewalks on that north side, and they make no sense. And some really, I mean, what are you connecting them to? You know, you're going to walk down that side to cross the road somewhere. So you've already got the sidewalk on the south side. So I, I don't think that's a real legitimate concern. It's a possibility, but I don't think it's, would ever happen. So I'm still hung up on number one.
Well, and the interesting thing is if they go to remove those poles, we wouldn't have the matching funds or participating funds to put towards it as well.
We don't know that. We don't know that.
Well, I mean, from the CIA, because you couldn't spend it in that area.
Right. We'd have to go through the process to expand it before we could do that.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. And Claire, you said you mentioned, in this resolution, you have which borders?
We have the, the borders. So the third whereas, we have the borders of option one.
Okay.
So that would be, you know, extends generally from Avenue B to East Bay Township, so-
That would need to be changed for, okay, if we go with option two.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I would make a motion to, are there any other questions for Claire? I would move to adopt Resolution 2025 to establish the East Bay District Corridor Improvement Authority. We'd need to know the number.
Yeah.
And we can look on the website quickly. There is one, there's a missing one on there, so I, we'll have to add an additional one. Or if somebody can flip to the last minutes of the meeting-
I was trying to look.
Twenty-one was the last one that the-
We have 2022, but I think there was a 2023 in the minutes at the joint meeting?
Said, yeah, Resolution 2023 was the Crimson Park.
Okay.
The residential housing certificate application.
Take a peek at the, let's see. We didn't have a resolution for the, at the township meeting. That was ACV that did. Okay. So you're saying it was 23?
Yeah. So this would be 24.
Okay. So Resolution 2025-24. Is there support?
I'd support that.
Okay. A motion made, there's-
I'm sorry, with which option are you doing?
As written, which would be option one.
Okay.
So this is Resolution 2025-24. And there's a motion by Friend and support by Bartlett. Further discussion?
Wait. We're, we're going with the, the established resolution, not with the one that incorporates option two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Correct. Everybody clear with that? Mindy, Glenn?
Okay. Why are we going with the one through Avenue B? Shouldn't we do whatever map first before we do this?
Well, this includes it, so I'm just cutting to the chase and including option one. This shows which one you're doing, but this has it written in here. This is the, this is the final say on that. And I'm hearing some support for option one, so that's what I'm going with.
So you're planning on adopting option one?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Yep. Mindy, you're clear with that?
Doesn't this go from further than Avenue B, though?
No, I think it's-
We, we have it on the exact boundaries of the, of township parcels, and so on the north side, it extends beyond Avenue B. So it says generally. We have a legal description as well, so we'll reference that in the motion.
So let me repeat the motion, so that we are clear. Move to approve Resolution 2025-24 to establish the East Bay Beach District Corridor Improvement Authority, which identifies option one map as the Corridor Improvement Authority District. Okay? And there's, Tracy, there's support for that motion?
Yes.
Okay. So that motion is made and supported. Any further questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ann?
Friend?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Em Corte?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Lyle?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And then, of the Corridor Improvement Board members, that's on page 73 in your packet. Any further questions or comments for Claire on that?
Do we need to make a motion on the map? Because that was on the second on the, even though we didn't-
I think Beth's motion included reference to option one, and we do have the legal description, so we'll, we'll go back and formalize all of that, too.
It just was number two on the-
Yeah.
Okay.
So with respect to the East Bay Beach District Corridor Improvement Authority recommendations for the board members, and also for the recommended liaisons, noting the addition of Steve Feringa for the Grand Traverse Tribe of Ottawa and Chippewa, and the ends, is there further questions or discussion or a motion? Yes, Mindy?
So number two, Chris Cargill, it says he's a local business owner. Is he the one that is actually just a brewer there and not a-
Yeah, and I apologize. I thought he was a business owner. And I didn't, I was not even thinking of him as having representation in the district, just because his business is outside of the district, so.
Okay.
The, the option, I will say, you know, this evening, you can appoint the board members, with the understanding that we'll be back to you with additional ones, or you can delay until the, the following month. We, you know, from a time perspective, we want to make sure we're doing this correctly, transparently, but at the same time, you know, we are trying to move forward with, with, you know, getting our organizational meeting, getting the bylaws, kind of keeping things moving. So that would be a policy decision whether the township board wanted to appoint the board tonight or, or delay, so.
Well, I, I recognize the, not only the attempt at doing it transparently, but that you have done it transparently, Claire. This has been noted through the Beach District process. It has been noted, what it's been at this board level. It has been on the website. You do have two residents who are in this, this recommendation. So while I realize that there's been a recent flutter of communication that, that perceives that it isn't, that's not necessarily what has happened with this process. And again, you mentioned that this can be expanded to, up to nine members, so. Mindy, did you have a question or comment?
I would like to see the whole list at once, is, so I would prefer to delay it. That's my opinion.
And that's fine.
Any, any delaying of this, I mean, it, it's not, we're not, we're not contingent on any kind of state approval or grant funding. It's not, it's not-
That's true. That's true. I would say the one kind of timeline that we're looking at is, I think it's May is when, if we have a TIF plan adopted by then, then we'd be able, just with all of the development that's going on right now, the, that incremental increase in taxable value that would allow us to use this year's tax role to, to capture. And so that would provide, you know, some significant revenue benefit. So that's, that's part of the reason, from a timing perspective, kind of why we're trying to keep moving.
Well, I, I kind of would, Mindy, I'd, I'd rather see a, a full list. And I guess, understanding, you know, where each of these people are significant stakeholders in the district, is there, is there any harm or reason why we wouldn't, if someone, you know, was truly interested in this and, and, you know, thought they'd get behind it, that just a general East Bay resident?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can have-
Local to one of the neighborhoods, not even included in the, in the map there that could participate.
Well, can they be outside, more than half a mile outside the district?
Yeah. So some of the requirements is one representative on this has to be a resident within a half mile. Can there be-
But then the others can be outside of that?
And over 50% have to have a business or property interest in the corridor.
Okay.
So those are kind of the confines that we're, that we're working with.
I knew there was something with the distance, so.
So you have currently, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, five members, six with Steve, and then myself, so seven. And you can do nine plus the highest elected official, which would be 10. And I'm a voting, or-
You are a voting.
Okay. So my recommendation would be to stick with nine, just because then you don't have any, chances are you wouldn't, but that way you don't have any even tie.
Yeah.
So with that, that would be the additional of up to two people that you could bring back for those names. Any other further comments or questions?
I'm curious if there's, sorry, just one, one comment. I'm curious if there's any guidance from the board on makeup that you're looking for, for this, for this Corridor Improvement Authority board. What we were looking to do was be as reflective as possible of the kind of stakeholders along the corridor, not just the, the property ownership, which is kind of part of the reason you're seeing the liaisons, but would be open to any additional guidance that you have.
Well, I guess I think where we have residents who frequent, live near, or routinely frequent through there on a daily basis, would be my preference. But that can definitely be outside of that area or the map, for sure.
Well, yeah. I mean, that changes with their life, but, you know, I mean, somebody who frequents it now may not frequent.
Well, someone who lives on Five Mile Road versus Potter Road or something is what I'm saying. Yeah. But also, I think, people who show an interest, because honestly, we haven't had, you know, there's a lot of activity with that, but then necessarily, not necessarily a lot saying, hey, I want to be on that board. Mindy?
Do we have an application process for that? Is that, I guess, we've got an audience here, we've got an audience on the camera. How can they apply?
So there is, on the website, you would go under Government, and it says Employment and Appointment.
Open Positions.
Appointments. And you would go there, and there's a listing there, and how to contact Claire regarding any involvement with that. That's where we get, that's where we got-
Planning Commissioner?
Isaac and Ryan, and, you know, those other positions that are employment positions as well as appointed.
Yeah. And just for clarification, for other boards and commissions, Planning Commission, for example, we don't have an application form. It's just information on how to-
Letter of intent.
How to, yeah.
They typically come and express an interest, and they'll come in and meet with whoever's staffs, or the chair of the board that they're interested in. So, for example, if it's Planning Commission, they might meet with Dan Leonard and Claire, and, you know, or, or Claire and myself if Dan's not available, or, or Claire and a member of her staff, the zoning administrator, or the project specialist, and, yeah. So with that, I guess I would move to approve the board members for consideration, and the recommended liaisons, with the notation that two additional residents be recommended with, in the next two months.
In addition to Steve Feringa?
Yes.
Of the tribe?
Yeah. Yep. That would put the, that would put the number at nine. Because while I, first of all, is there support for that?
Yeah, I would support that. If the expectation is that in November, we'd get the other, the other two?
Well, she said two months. That's December.
Okay.
Sometimes it takes a little while.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Because what I, while I agree with you, I don't see any huge detriment in waiting. I also don't see us looking at any of these and going, well, take them off there, you know?
Sure. Sure. Would, would you, would you intend to, with an approval of the list that you've got tonight, when, when would you plan to kind of kick things off?
We were hoping to have an organizational meeting with this group end of October, just to kind of take, review the bylaws, appoint, yeah.
One drawback that I see to that is you're going to have new members coming in after this stuff has been decided.
Mm-hmm.
I personally think we should wait till we got everybody and then approve the list. That's my-
These, these will-
Prefer it.
Yeah. I understand. These will, that meeting will also be posted and open to the public. Yeah. Further discussion? Okay.
I just want to clarify, this Chris Cargill, you know, you had him as an owner, does he live down there, or is he somewhere?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. So he is a resident on Four Mile Road, uses the Tart Trail, like, definitely a very active stakeholder in our Beach District. And I know, just kind of, yeah, uses the corridor quite a bit.
Because I believe some of the owned property or the business owners don't live within the township. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So just wanted to make sure that he was still a resident.
Yeah. Yeah. He lives less than a half mile from the, from the district.
Okay. So there is a motion to approve the two, four, six, seven, seven members, and the recommended liaisons, with two more additional resident members being brought back before the board for appointment within the next two months. There is support for that. Motion by Friend, support by Cook. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And we'll do a roll call vote. Ann?
Uh, Friend?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Uh, Walters?
No.
Lyle?
No.
Em Corte?
No.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay. You got a tie vote, so it goes down.
Yep. Okay. Well, then we'll see you back with that in November.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Can you, then we're done with Corridor Improvement Authority, correct? And we'll move on to Safe Routes to School?
Yeah. So this is kind of a-
And Mindy has a conflict, so she is leaving. Thank you, Mindy.
Mindy, get out of here.
Later.
So this is kind of a quick item of Safe Routes to School. We are looking at impacting, I think it's less than a third of an acre, but in that range of wetland. And that would be in the, kind of traditionally what you think of as drainage ditches along the corridor, along Hammond and a portion of Three Mile. And so as a part of the project, the township is seeking wetland credits for that. We've got some available through the Road Commission. We need to make sure we have an accurate delineation of where the wetlands are located. Luckily, we've had a bit of recent developments. We have accurate wetland delineation at True North Gas Station, across the street, at the new senior living facility. So a lot of that's been already delineated, but there's a little bit of a gap. And so we're looking at subcontracting, Brian and Newhoff would subcontract with GEI to do that wetland delineation. They're looking at $2,500. So we're looking for approval for a contract amendment, the grant funding. This would come out of the grant funding that we've secured. And I will mention that we will also be coming in front of you for another contract amendment for the landscaping plan. I talked with Connie today. She assured me it's not a huge number, so it would be a similar contract amendment to this one, also covered under grant funding. But you can expect to see another contract amendment after this one.
Okay. Any questions for Claire? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the contract amendment with Brian and Newhoff to cover the subcontract with GEI for wetland delineation?
I'd make that motion.
Support.
A motion is made and by Bartlett and supported by Cook. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no?
No.
Okay. We'll do a roll call. Ann?
Uh, Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Em Corte?
No.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. And we are to the zoning amendments.
Okay.
And these are introductions, correct?
Yep. So there's no vote this evening, but this is an introduction. So we have zoning amendment four dash 25. That's the temporary dwelling units, also known as the camping. We've got zoning amendment five dash 25, which is impervious area definition, and then six dash 25, which is accessory dwelling units. So I'll go through each of them, and then you can answer questions if, or I can answer questions about them. So the first one is related to the temporary dwelling. As I put in the packet, there's been significant public discussion on this and public meetings. Sorry, Mindy, we started before you got back. So I, I linked the minutes from the April 3 meeting, the May 6, the July 1, and the August 5, just for your reference of kind of what was discussed. As you are aware, currently temporary dwelling units are not permitted in East Bay Township, resulting in, you know, prohibition of camping on private property. I would say, I, I felt like the Planning Commission spent a lot of time listening to the public, kind of deliberating and discussing, trying to find a ban- the public, kind of deliberating and discussing, trying to find a balance. Mindy is here and can, and can, you know, provide any additional context, but to summarize right now, with the draft amendment, it allows for camping for, um, up to ten consecutive days and forty-five days in a calendar year. It allows one temporary dwelling unit, or like camper, per acre with up to a maximum of four. So if you've got twenty acres, you can have four. If you have fifteen acres, you can have four. If you have three acres, you can have three.
And that's occupied or unoccupied?
Yes, yep. They may not be used as a short-term rental, and so part of our, um, contract with GUB OS, we, we have information, and they're monitoring those, any commercial uses. They're prohibited within environmentally sensitive areas, they must manage the waste properly, and then the last piece that we, that we're adding in is that Planning and Zoning Department may issue a permit for up to a hundred and eighty days in the event of a fire, a natural disaster, or for home construction, and that can be extended based on, you know, evidence that, that the, that there's, you know, land use permit, and they're working towards construction. So, um, that's kind of the summary of what we're looking at. That public hearing was held, um, last week. It was supported five to two, so we did have two dissenting, and I will, Mindy, if you want to mention anything, you're more than welcome to.
So can you talk about the permitting piece? Because we did explore that permitting piece. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because we did hear a bunch about it tonight, but we did explore that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, part of our feeling was that the, the violators would be the ones that would be unlikely to, to, um, secure the permits. A lot of our benefit that we find with, um, with our enforcement is the education and communicating our ordinance requirements. So generally, when we communicate the requirements, we find that people follow the rules. Sometimes they don't, but we, we feel that the ones that, that aren't going to follow the, the rules are the ones that are also not going to be applying for the permit. So, it's, you know, while it is easy to set up a, um, you know, a, a website portal where people can go in and register, that's a lot of outreach and communication about the process. That's a lot of people likely that wouldn't be following the process, and so our concern was that that would be, um, not, not an effective way of administering the ordinance.
We talked a lot about, um, I believe the state forest has a permit system, if you go camping on their property because they're unmanned, that you just go in and, you know, get an online permit, that kind of thing. And, and we backed off of that a little bit, um, but I do, I do see the benefit for it, but we did explore that option. I will say that I did vote no, and I am good with the ordinance with all but one thing. Um, and nobody's here to state the other side, but I am in objection to the forty-five days. I thought we should start with something lower than that. We can always make it further out, but we can't bring it back, I don't think, so.
I did have a little, a question somewhat related to that. So, as I understand this written here, that's been recommended, the, the comment regarding, you know, this could happen through the most part of the summer, that's not accurate as far as this, because it has to be limited to ten days, correct?
It's ten consecutive days, so you could go ten days and pull it off for a day and then come back.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's.
Yeah.
That's the, um, that's where everybody's saying. And where my thought is, forty-five days is going to take you every weekend from Labor Day to Memorial Day, right? That was my thought, so that's why I, I personally believe it should be lower than that, that forty-five days. I was overruled, I'm one of seven on the board. Five people think that that is, is the, that forty-five days is the right number.
Yeah.
I, I do not believe.
And I think there was a meeting that you were gone for, and I brought an updated version back in front of the Planning Commission that I think was like seven days and a maximum of thirty for the season, and it was, I, I believe unanimous support for the original, which was ten days and forty-five.
I'm one of seven, and I'm, I'm trying to say that here too. I believe that the forty-five days is too, but I got outvoted. But I, I, I made a lot of changes to this, to this ordinance. I, I recommended a lot of changes to this ordinance that, that, that the board did accept. The camping one, with the tents in the person's backyard, that, that one, um, is one that I kind of hammered home, because I think people should be able to have their kids go camping in their backyard without a problem. But again, I think the forty-five days is too long. That's how, I will vote again, because that's how I voted at Planning Commission, but if you have any other questions about the ordinance, I'm happy to.
Under the regulations in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, B1, a temporary dwelling unit shall not be used. Is there a definition of used in here?
Should be probably occupied.
Okay. And then, uh, on, uh, B2, one temporary dwelling unit is allowed on any single zoning lot of record. I guess, is this, um, is there some ambiguity here to, um, storage? You know, storing, if it's, it just states one temporary dwelling unit is allowed on any lot. Where's, where's the delineation between, hey, I'm just parking my travel trailer on the back of my lot, winterizing it versus, you know, it being used or occupied?
So, I guess we do address that to an extent later on in this, in this subsection that specifies that we don't really make a differentiation be, so, say you want to store, you, you can have a maximum of four, if you have, you know, if you have a larger lot. So, say you're storing three RVs, you can, one of them can be occupied. So you can't have four that are occupied, plus four that are, that are stored, because elsewhere in our ordinance, we allow for the, um, storage of recreational vehicles. So in terms of how do we know whether they're occupied or not occupied, that's really a complaint that comes in, our zoning administrator goes out, you know, takes a look at it, you can normally tell whether or not it's occupied, sometimes they stop by, they talk with the property owner, and that's, that happens frequently in terms of an investigation.
So I'm confused now. So, can you leave your camper on your property, just not use it all summer long, no, no timeframe?
You can now.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I was like, all of a sudden, I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah, it's not.
I mean, it can't even sit there.
It's not in every district, so.
Okay, because I know there are some homeowner associations that have restrictions. You can't have your camper in your driveway for more than two days, or I don't know what it is, but I've run into that before, so I was just trying to clarify. And can, so, any size lot can have one camper. If you want two, you have to have two acres. Okay. That's what, somebody asked me that question, and I'm like, no, any size lot can have one, but if you want more than one, you have to have two acres, so, okay.
Fun.
I got a real issue with this. Now, I'm always thought that people ought to be able to camp in their backyard, okay? Having said that, I've got some concerns that when this passes, we're going to open a whole can of worms, and there's no way to regulate it, because nobody knows who's where, and nobody knows who's there that long, whether it's ten days or all summer, unless somebody complains. Am I correct, or, okay? That's the problem I got with it.
I mean, it's the same, we don't know that blight exists unless somebody reports that blight.
We don't know that they're doing it now, and it's not allowed at all.
And we evidently real issue yet.
No.
But what I'm afraid of is when they open it up, everybody's going to want to do it, and you're going to have no control.
Hmm, I don't think it's any different than.
Take a look at short-term rebels. When we open that up, we got to go back and try to fix it.
I would say the, the one difference with this versus short-term rental is, I, I think we found the short-term rentals was extremely lucrative from a commercial standpoint and revenue generation. This, the, the way that this ordinance was drafted was to, you know, really ensure that it's, that, that it's not lucrative from a revenue standpoint, but.
Yeah.
Okay, Claire, does this need to be noticed? Do we have to, you know, direct to be noticed or anything like that? Okay. All right, well.
If you make any changes, you would go back to the Planning Commission, we'd re-notice it, another public hearing, but if you, you know, if you're not recommending any changes at this point, you would have the opportunity to adopt this at your next board meeting. We can make minor changes. For example, the used could be changed to occupied for a clerical. That, that would be fine, but if there's any change to the content, then we would need to go back through the process.
Hey, is there any, is there more discussion on this, or questions?
I, I'm assuming that, that, you know, I know this has been kind of at least behind the scenes of the board with the Planning Commission for a while, it's been a topic of conversation. I've heard little bits and pieces of it. I'm assuming this was driven by, um, a couple of incidents or issues.
You know, I think it was, I think it was driven by, as we were working through the zoning ordinance, it came to light that, wow, we don't allow any camping, and that's different than what we found in our other neighboring communities, and in talking to, you know, other planners and other zoning administrators. And so I think with the subcommittee, we said, you know, hey, maybe that's something we should take a look at, drafted an ordinance pretty similar to this, um, with some changes. I, I think that this is, has vetted it more thoroughly, but had, had a draft ordinance in the whole, the, the whole zoning ordinance had a provision to allow for camping, and that really became a hot-button issue. And so, the Planning Commission ultimately decided, hey, let's, let's parking lot this, and, and spend some more time next, let's adopt the ordinance without that provision in there, and spent some more time really focusing on it the following year. So that's kind of where we.
When the zoning ordinance came to us in the fall, it was actually in that zoning ordinance, because we talked about it here at this board, and we sent it back to the Planning Commission just for, um, clarification on, you know, was that really the right number of days? That's my recollection.
Yeah, after the joint meeting.
Yeah.
You asked for some clarification. The public hearing, we just, that was taken out for the public hearing.
Right, because then you had some, some idea, some topics that the Planning Commission was going to address after we did the ordinance.
And I do remember, I said on the Rewrite Committee, and I remember you specifically coming and saying that, hey, you know, they can't camp if the way it's written now. And then we had quite a bit of discussion about that, not a lot, but some, and I thought we've kind of landed on a pretty decent compromise, and it's kind of where we're at here. I mean, personally, I'm a three sixty-five guy, I, I think you should have personal property rights to do what you want to do, but we're, that's not where we're at, so.
All right, further discussion or, um, questions? If not, we'll, we'll move on and consider this notice for, for this meeting that we've introduced it, and we move on to zoning amendment five dash twenty-five.
Okay, so this one is to clarify the definition of impervious area, to allow for, um, a engineered permeable system with a design that's approved by the township, and that includes regular maintenance, would not be considered impervious. So right now, the way that the definition is written in our zoning ordinance is, every drivable surface is considered, um, impervious, which makes sense, because if you drive on gravel, that's impervious. If you're driving on grass long enough, that compacts, that's impervious. So, while I understand kind of the, the thought behind that, we're running into a situation, and, and really the ZBA asks the Planning Commission to take a look at it, because there's been numerous variance requests related to impervious surface, and what we're finding is that there's so many small lots in the Lakes area where people are looking to, you know, build, and they're running up against that twenty percent, um, impervious limitation. And so, in talking with township engineer, there was support for allowing for a permeable pavement system to be installed that would not count as impervious. And I want to clarify that, that permeable pavement system is not putting down patio pavers, that would be really installing a system that includes, you know, that's a couple feet deep, so they're very expensive. I think most likely, we're not going to find a ton of property owners that, that ultimately decide to install those, but it would provide the option for somebody to install a system. In terms of maintenance, would we be going out and checking the maintenance? No, but we don't do that with our stormwater systems. There's, you know, there's stuff that's built, and we rely on, um, on accurate, the, the installment and the, the maintenance, and if there's an issue, then that's when we go out and we take a look at it and, and take enforcement.
Yeah, I do recall when, um, Brian was addressing the Parks Commission, and that was not related to the type of system that you're talking about, that I'm not as familiar with, it was just talking about using paver, like, um, what do I want to say, like, pavers, with space in between them, you know what I'm talking about? Like, oh, come on, somebody knows what I'm talking about.
Sort of like the lattice, the lattice shaped, the lattice shaped pavers with gravel in them.
Versus concrete.
Well, I think, so this, we're talking about the unilock pavement system or something similar.
Yeah.
I do believe, and I, I might be wrong, but I talked with Brian Susan, I think it was actually, is it Garth that was speaking at that Planning Commission meeting with Wade Trim? Is that his name? Garth?
Garth?
Garth Bogart.
Bogart.
I thought that was Brian.
No, it was Garth Bogart.
Brian's talked about it before, we had several conversations.
Yeah, so in my conversation with Brian, they were, um, discussing the unilock system with concerns that, that it would need to be maintained, and so that's the same with, with any system. And, you know, with the township, with, with the intensity of use in a public park is different than a private property, was kind of the, the feedback that Brian provided.
That is, I do remember him talking about the intensity of use.
Well, and the intensity of the maintenance that the township would have to take on, because I remember that conversation, because we've talked about it at the ZBA, because like Claire indicated, we've had several, um, variance requests for impervious surface, and there's no mechanism to really give that a variance, because it's percentage and not use, and not, not like, you know, a two-foot versus a three-foot or a ten-foot variance, you know? So, the ZBA had a really hard time with that, and, um, a couple of them we denied, a couple of them withdrew, because we couldn't, we couldn't help them. And, um, so that's why the ZBA had asked that they look at it, to, to give us some kind of mechanism, or not us, but our residents, some mechanism to do that, to get an answer.
Yeah, I, I do feel that this would provide the intent of the ordinance, which is limiting to twenty percent impervious because of water quality and stormwater runoff and, and those types of things. So, there are, this would be an example of a green infrastructure system that could be installed, that could address that.
Yeah.
That could help address that. I've talked with the city, the city of Traverse City, very similarly, that administers it the same way with some of the smaller parcels and.
And I think, doesn't Garfield also have it? I thought there was one other township.
Garfield has allowed some permeable pavement systems on some of their commercial developments, specifically the Cass and South Airport.
Yeah, which is the one I brought up when we were doing the ZBA variance request, because I've been watching that go in.
The, what, the coffee place?
Yeah, because we've looked at it for something on our property, and we've, we were trying to find a solution, and that was very intriguing to us.
I noticed the pavers there too. I will have to say, I was there for the coffee, not watching the pavers, but I did notice it, it was pretty interesting.
I haven't seen it go through a winter yet. It was, it was just new last year, and, so I don't know, I'm anxious to see how it survives the winter this year.
The other thing I'll just mention is that we're also making a slight modification to the definition of. to the definition of stormwater detention, just to clarify that each altered site shall control stormwater on their property, whether or not they're required to get a stormwater permit. So right now, we kind of, that provision is tied only to a stormwater permit. This is consistent with state requirements that, that specify that everyone is, you know, required to control stormwater on site. Are we going to be going out and checking it, requiring the calculations? No, but we still have this provision in the, in the ordinance to, to fall back on. Specifically, some of our commercial sites are not required to get a stormwater permit because they are not increasing the total impervious surface, but they're still doing a complete redevelopment. So in those types of instances, we can still require stormwater calculations and information without issuing the stormwater permit, and we have that to fall back on.
Okay, other comments or questions?
The, I guess the definition of impervious area, that last sentence, is there a, I don't know if it's, if there is an industry standard out there for these types of systems, do they meet some kind of?
You know, there's a number of different industry standards, which is why we didn't fall back on a specific one. Help me out here, Mindy.
There's ASHTO, there's ASTM, American, American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO, STM, American Society of Astm Materials.
Yeah, so there's a few that are, that are pretty common, and so, you know, we would have the cut sheets and the information on those ones. We would have the township engineer to fall back on if we had any questions related to, you know, reviewing any of that information.
Those would be kind of reviewed and approved on a case-by-case basis, and you're not going to be flooded with these-
I don't think so.
Reviews.
No, because they're pretty extensive.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, if there's not anything further, then we'll, we've introduced this, and we'll move on to zoning amendment six dash 25, accessory dwelling units.
So this is a ordinance amendment. It really was precipitated by a resident in the Lakes area wanted to provide an accessory dwelling unit, space for his, I believe, son and, and wife to, to live in, recently married, on their property in the Lakes area. I started talking with him, I think his parcel was a couple acres. I've talked with Long Lake Township, what they're looking at, and they actually just introduced and held a public hearing, is allowing for ADUs, kind of including Lakes properties, but requiring that they meet the underlying dimensional requirements, so the lot size and the lot width. I think in our conversations related to accessory dwelling units in the Lakes area, it was like, we've got these parcels that are like .1 acre or, you know, .25 acres, and so it's really not, not consistent with the density that the master plan contemplates and not consistent with, with what the zoning requires. So we felt that this would be an opportunity to be consistent with our master plan, which desires to have more housing options throughout the township. Right now, we do really limit our kind of workforce housing or, or flexible housing standards are very much focused in our urban growth boundary, which makes sense, but there's other situations where people are looking for a little bit more flexibility. So this allows for some additional housing while still kind of maintaining those, those density requirements that we're, that we are looking at outside of the urban growth boundary. I will mention that any type of a septic system or any, any ADU would have to get approval by the Grand Harvest County Health Department, so they would need to have a, you know, functioning septic system, not just for the primary unit, but also for the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you for the overview. Any comments regarding from the Planning Commission?
The only thing that we are going to have to look at with regards to the ADUs Mr. Gonzalez brought up is how these ADUs will count with regards to the short-term rentals, but that's something that we can look at, at later on, you know, are these-
Of the total housing?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. All right.
I, I was curious, along the same topic, what, what's the reasoning behind item number six here, that the short-term rental licenses not be issued for any accessory dwelling unit?
So we, we don't allow accessory, right now, we don't allow accessory, or we don't allow a short-term rental license in an ADU, but it didn't specify that it can't be issued for the principal residence, but really, the, the intent behind ADUs is to allow for long-term housing. So if you build an ADU and then you live in the ADU and then you get a short-term rental license, it's, it's sort of defeating the purpose of the goal behind ADUs, which is for long-term permanent housing.
Question. At the MTA lunch this last, was it this last time? We had somebody come talk about the septic inspections, and they're putting out something, I just, I'm just clarifying, or for your information, there is going to be a time when they're recommending septic inspections at time of transfer or sale around the, around the lakes, is what I understand.
Within a certain distance.
Yep, and they're going to be sending out information to the supervisors, I believe, to get feedback, but, so that is going to address some of this issue, too.
Yeah.
As far as the septics.
I did come across like a one-page file that they had through the county, it was on, I think county distributed that on like their Facebook page.
Yeah, I think-
And it had some information on it.
Yeah, I think Mike Leahy is going to send, or somebody from his office is going to send something out to the supervisors and the planners, is what I suggested.
I haven't seen anything through those channels, but of course, we were with some of the subcommittee, some of those meetings and-
Yeah, we kind of worked through the policy development process, but now I think they're figuring out how to administer.
Yeah.
That will be helpful.
They're trying.
Yeah.
It's a pretty daunting task, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, every other questions, comments? Okay, it looks like we are through the zoning amendments, then, then what I'm hearing is these will be back next month. The only particular change that I heard was the one wording for occupied.
The added, yeah.
Is that correct? Okay, all right, then we'll move forward. Crimson Development, this begins on page 97. This has already been approved. What this is, the resolution, the way that it is required through the frequently asked questions on the state website has very particular statements that they want in the resolution. So this is the updated resolution. It does the same thing, it just adds more of the factual information that they want to see as far as assurance that certain things are, are in existence for that application, which, let's see, we were on 24, so this would be resolution 2025 dash 25. Again, you have the updated resolution and you have the resolution as it passed, and the areas, Fishback has highlighted the areas that were changed so that it is in, in alliance with the FAQs from the state. So with that, is there a resolution, a motion for resolution 2025, approval of the application for the residential housing?
I would make the motion to approve resolution 2025 25. Okay, that's all right. I was going to finish the title.
Go ahead.
And the revised attached to, attachment to of the certificate application.
Support.
Okay, very good. Do them all in one, that's great.
Oh, wasn't, it was supposed to be-
Oh, did I have them both in?
Yep.
Oh, perfect, great. Well, I guess I'm trying to be efficient before even-
I was reading off your page.
Okay, so there's a motion by Bartlett and support by M. Cortade for the resolution and the revised attachment. Any further discussion? And we'll do a roll call vote.
Bartlett?
Yes.
M. Cortade?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
And friends?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. We come down to our added item, which is our budget amendments. You'll see these are in front of you. These are pretty relatively standard. You'll see the different departments. I did note down below, because it doesn't have in the description the department, and we've got some budget amendments for the Clerk's Office, and I think those were 5,000. The Treasurer's Office is 6,000. I know the Treasurer's Office was 2,000, I'm sorry, 4,000 for the security window that the board approved. It's this right here.
Yeah, I just think I got it mixed up in my bag.
Oh.
Yeah, I just got buried in here somewhere.
Oh, I see. Let me give you a second to just identify it. Oh, there it is. Got it? All right. Okay, so again, you can see the department numbers down through there, 215 with the Clerk's Office, and you can see the different sections there. The Treasurer's Office is 253, and that 6,500 is comprised of 4,000 for the security window that the Township Board approved with that proposal and placing that infrastructure in, and then 2,000 for computers. And then we move on to Elections has a few changes. That is Department 262, Benefits, and the, let's see, where are we? Department 271 on the pension plan, the, and that's just updating based on the numbers that I've seen from the past 10 months and then pacing those out the next two months. The engineering expense in Department 702, that really has to do with, that's about 15,000. That really has to do with the stormwater management permit. We've had two issues, the one that you've heard about with Lavender Hills and Highland.
Highland, Hammond Highland.
Thank you, I was losing the name, but that was, as I mentioned to you, I had the engineer go over all of that, and Claire had elicited them even prior to that. And then also, we've had some, an issue over on Holiday Road. So between both of those, the engineering came up higher than expected in the Planning and Zoning Department. Insurance is bonds, just marginally off on 865. The pass-through to nonprofits, that is considerable, but we also received that revenue, and that's that pass-through grant to the tribal group, the elders, elders advisory group that we put the application in for. And I've just balanced those with the road projects, which we did not do, any SADs this year and contingencies, and just took the rest to balance it out of a, a capital line item that we're, we're not going to use there. So those are the budget amendments for the Fund 101. Fund 210, which is the ambulance, is just a small difference between the current capital budget is at 25,000 and the total line item's going to end up being 26,500, and I could only add $1,000 on capital per the board resolution. So that's a small change with the 1,500, and you had positive net revenues there, so I didn't take it out of anyplace else. So with that, I would look to the board to approve fiscal year 2025, quarter three budget amendments as presented on Journal Entry 26992 and 26993.
So moved.
Okay, is there support?
Or-
Okay, a motion made by Cook and supported by Lyle. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by no? All right, very good. With that, we move to the last opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for public comment. We do ask you not to address the same issue, however, I know some of you have waited here for quite some time, so if you would, if you're addressing the same issue, just keep it brief. How are you? Michelle, correct?
Correct.
Hi, Michelle.
So what I want to address is transparency. I heard several times, we were very transparent, and I would disagree with you as being somebody from the public. I heard you say that the Pine Grove neighborhood chose not to be included. I would say that the Pine Grove neighbors did not know anything about the CIA opportunities until this weekend. I maintain a listserv for the Pine Grove group. It's not huge. I'm increasing it all the time, and I got names tonight, and will continue to increase it. But until this weekend, after I attended Friday's session, when I sent out information about what was happening, they didn't know, and the feedback I got, they didn't know. So those letters that you got, I don't know how many that you received, I hope you received a few at least, were from people who were informed from that listserv. To try and navigate your website is impossible unless you're deeply involved in the township. I spent a lot of time today trying to find information about the Beach District, and tonight, as I'm sitting here, I finally just put in Beach District and I got an update. And when I went through the update, there were 10 links before I found a sentence at the very bottom of the update that said, if you want to read our minutes and agenda, click here, and it's, the, the link was just click here, and I realized I've never seen that because I never got to that part. There was such, so much up above it. So when you say that it's on your news brief, wherever that is, I still haven't found that. When you say that the minutes are out there, finding the minutes is impossible, impossible to read them. I read them while I'm sitting back there, so that's how I just got updated on that. The only way I got information was from other people sharing that with me. That's not the best way for me to get this information. So are you transparent? You're transparent, and you put it on your website. Your website is like digging a grave, and then you bury it. So I appreciate what you do. I am supportive of the Beach District. I resent that you say that the Pine Grove neighborhood was not interested in participating. We were. So I respectfully disagree, and I apologize for my outburst.
Oh.
But it was very difficult to hear you say that. And no, it wasn't true.
We have had people from Pine Grove involved in the Beach District process, so we're very fortunate for that.
We had a person. And yes, and that is where I have been giving, getting some of my information, and I do appreciate that. But to get it from an official source would be really nice, and that is impossible.
Michelle, I'd also have you check our newsletters, too, that have had information in it that you get with your tax invoices twice a year.
And, and it is not there. So what I would say is the opportunities, I've read everything that Claire has sent on the Beach District. The opportunity, when there was something about the CIA, to say, if you're interested in participating as a member of a committee, call me, that would have been great. To put on a QR code and say, scan this if you're interested in participating. As I walked in and saw all of those beautiful descriptions of things that are going on, if there was a QR code and said, scan this and you can pick up all of our minutes that have included the discussions, that would have been a great way to share information. Never saw anything like that. And, and I've said in my letter that I sent to you all today, I was never approached. I've been at every one of these meetings. I probably missed the August meeting because I was damn busy this summer. I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I was at the July meeting, but I, I, you know, I can't be at every single one, but never did anybody approach me and say, hey, you know, this is what we're, we're starting to develop, you've been at every one of these meetings, is this something you might be interested in? Claire did contact me today, but it's because Trenton commented to her that I'd be interested. So, you know, I think that there's so many missed opportunities, and I do believe you are being transparent, you're feeling you're being transparent, but again, you put it on the website, and it's like putting in a grave. It's buried. So I just, you know, I just want you to understand from our perspective that we're not getting that information, that you think you're- not getting that information that you think you're putting out there.
Thanks for being here tonight, Michelle.
Mm-hmm.
Any further public comment? Hi, Carol, how are you?
Just a quick thought, and I may be off-base on this, but tonight, there was a lot of discussion about housing, housing for a wide variety of people. But oftentimes, when I hear about developments in our township, I feel that one population is being left out. Again, I may be in error here in my information, but it seems to me that the individual average home, where you own the lot, you own the home, you build up your financial resources with that, the American dream, quote unquote, isn't really that available in East Bay Township in the new developments. When I think about the new developments, I think of one where you buy a portable home and then you rent a lot. And so forever, you're, you're paying somebody else, some other big developer. Or another one where you rent a home, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedrooms, forever. And I wonder if, if I am accurate in this observation, is there something the township can do to promote that kind of housing for, for people who want to downsize or people who want to begin in the market? So just something to think about and maybe share or tell us where to find that information. What is the housing, the different types of housing that are available within our township?
There is actually a resource that I want to mention to you, and I think this was emailed to the board. I'm not sure if we had it out anywhere, but I'll look back and see. And it was a zoning atlas presentation that I think you'd be interested in. It not only goes through the zoning atlas, but it also goes through a study of what people in the market are looking for in homes. You might find it as surprising as I did. I was quite surprised at, at some of the conclusions that they had. But I'll check on that link and I'll put it on our website, but I'll send it to you, too.
All right, thank you.
I'll be brief, because I was up already. I just want to support Michelle and...
Just your name.
Teresa.
Thank you.
And I do live on Indian Trail Boulevard, that I do believe there is a lack of transparency. A link would have been nice. The only reason I found out about this was because of Michelle and that she had to find out from someone else. And we heard about different meetings. We were not informed, and there is nothing on the letter that came with my tax bill regarding all of this. If the temporary housing, you're actually considering that, I hope the minimum is one acre. I have an Airbnb next to me, she has an RV. I would hate to see that turned into another 10-day, 45-day, that takes up the whole summer on top of the Airbnb in between her garage and my house. So I appreciate your time, I do appreciate your efforts. I would like to see some more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, did you get her last name as well?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay.
Jeff Geiger, East Bay Township.
Hi.
Your website is very difficult for the average person to go through there. I'm savvy enough that I've figured it out a little bit. A lot of people don't know, they can sign up for emails. You might want to make that more available to them if you want them watching them. The chairs are still very uncomfortable. Thank you for everything you guys do here. Have a good night.
You're welcome. We do put how to sign up for those agendas and minutes in every newsletter that we send out to every resident twice a year, so thank you, though.
A lot of reading.
Yep, it sure is. All right, if there is any further public comment, saying none, then our next meeting is November. Who has their agenda out? Is it November 8? I have on the bottom there?
November 10.
November 10. If there's no objection, then we stand adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.